I want to welcome everybody here to the November 10th, 2022, meeting of the Frankford-Franken County Planning Commission.
Could you speak up, please?
I am speaking as loud as I possibly can.
Speak as loud, loud.
All right, I'll do that. People in front of me. Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'll have to hurry here. Okay, I want to welcome everyone here to the
Thank you.
November 10th, 2022, gathering of the Frankford-Franken County Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Yes.
Sherrod Jackson.
Here.
Keith Lee. Carl Looney.
Here.
Timothy Lusher.
Here.
William M. May.
Here.
Daryl Sanderson.
Here.
Charles Stewart.
Here.
Brent Swager.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Forum of 10.
Okay. And now I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting.
I actually have a correction to minutes.
Okay.
Ms. Sewell, on page 3 of minutes, second paragraph.
Please read those minutes.
Oh, ma'am, who wants to read the entire minutes? I'm reading corrections.
Right, read the corrections loud.
Second paragraph, it says, "Mr. Lusher made a motion to place the Bourbon Barrel Warehouse text amendment on the next month's agenda for discussion and reconsideration. It was actually for consideration and recommendation." And that is on at minute 34 and 47 seconds of the tape.
Thank you.
Okay, you'll have a second.
That was a motion.
That's a motion, okay.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have a voice call.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Chairman Wright.
Yes.
Motion is unanimous.
Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills?
Show move.
Second.
Second. I made it withdrawn.
Third.
Fourth.
Madam Secretary.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee.
I don't know what it is, ma'am.
Mr. Looney.
Good luck finding a chair.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager. Chairman Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes to him.
Okay. The staff actually have a very regular comp plan. Want to talk about that?
Sure. Evening, Commission. Eric Cockley, Director of City Planning and Community Development Department. Real brief update, work continues on the comp plan. We just had a series of public open house engagement opportunities yesterday. Had pretty decent turnout. I think total between the two events was about 74 people. So, a lot of folks we've seen before, but in the evening session last night, there were also at least a handful of faces we haven't. So, that's a good thing. Next advisory committee meeting is this coming Tuesday at the River Room, and they'll be discussing focusing on economic development. And so, we've got some stakeholders associated with that coming to the open house before that meeting on Tuesday. And then, hopefully, early next week, I will have nailed down the series of satellite meetings. I think we've shared with you all the idea of getting out to the different places in the community and a couple to try to hit some underrepresented groups. Well, we've just about nailed that down. I just got to confirm days and times on our locations. And then, we'll start trying to push that kind of information out to the public. That's about all I got for the moment.
Okay, any questions, Eric? Thank you, Eric. Okay, next we have, we don't really have any, as far as I know, any reports from special committees. I think we do have some old business. I think that Brent was.
Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, we heard a case before the planning commission. It was a zoning request for Duncan Lane, 69 Duncan Lane.
Duncan Road.
Duncan Roads, excuse me. And so, the planning commission made a recommendation to deny that zone change. That went, got forwarded to fiscal court, and then, after that, the fiscal court decided to go opposite of our recommendation, and they approved it. So, as a result of that, I'd like to entertain the idea that we request a development plan for review and to take action on when that development plan is submitted. So, I'd like to make a motion that we receive that for action at a future meeting.
Second.
Can we do that?
In my opinion, we lost jurisdiction when we made a determination. I think the development plan is up to the appropriate body of review. We can make a recommendation, they do that, but I don't think we can put that under our authority.
Who is the appropriate body?
Well, is it going to the county or the city? It depends on which, where the zoning plan is taken place.
It is in the fiscal court.
Well, they never, they never approve the requirement for the development plan review for us. But that's our, that's our requirement.
No, that was our requirement. No, I mean, we put that on the, on the first one. We didn't put that on the second. We denied it.
I understand.
So, what statute limits our ability to do that?
It's not the courts. I mean, you can make a recommendation to the county, but in my opinion, I don't.
It's going to come to planning staff, though, correct? It's going to come to planning staff for review, which are part of us?
No, no, they're not part of us. They're, they belong to us from city and county to assist in our administration of the out here in the county forests, but we don't employ the county staff.
I guess, I mean, I respectfully disagree. Whether I'm right or wrong, I disagree. It seems like this is something that's.
That's fine. I'm just here to give you advice. I'm not here to vote.
It seems like this is, this is an issue that is under the purview of what we do. It's part of our mission to be part of that, so.
Mr. Logan, could that be reworded as a recommendation or request to the fiscal court?
I mean, I think we could make a recommendation to fiscal court to do that and send it to us for a development plan, but I don't think we can order it just report to do anything.
Once again, fiscal court is not, they're not reviewing or approving the development plan.
They could. They would have the authority if they wished to.
Logan, I'm going to keep the motion as I originally stated.
Could you repeat it?
I can, I can paraphrase. This would be to require that the development plan be sent to us and to submit it to staff for our consideration and for us to take action on that, which would be either approve or deny it or modify it.
Yeah, I'll second them. Given that this, not just this case, but any case in the future, I'd like to see that challenged and get a court to rule on that, that we don't have the ability to review that.
But it's just, once we pass it on and don't do it, I don't know how we'd get that item back in front of us again. And that's kind of all we're doing here. But if you all want to try it, I.
There's no way for us to deny it, but say, "but if." So, that's the problem, right? If we deny it, we can't say, "But if somebody else approves it, we want to come back." We could have done that? Okay.
You know, if you make a recommendation and say, "Albert, should you not approve this or should you disapprove, you know, approve this, that we request to be brought back to us for additional review?" Now, whether or not that would stand after a certain court test, I don't know, but yes, you could. We haven't done it in a couple of decades.
Has this been tested? Do you know if this specific issue has been tested?
I'm sorry, Ma'am, what?
Do you know if this specific circumstance has been tested?
No, I do not know if it's been tested. What I'm saying is, I don't know of any basis to do it, and I don't know of any basis not to do it. I'm just saying that because of the jurisdiction, I have a question, our authority.
Well, I mean, if we go through, if we go through a vote and it gets approved and it's just not appropriate, it doesn't, I don't think that it just negates itself.
There's a motion, I second, so.
Let's get on with it.
Any discussion? You have a second. Is there any discussion before we go to vote? Is any discussion here about the commission? We have a motion, a second.
My only question is actually the legalities of it. If it's a recommendation, I think, yes, I agree with Brent that we should see a development plan, but I don't think we require the city or county to do it.
That's more along with Brent's, Brent's got more rigid language.
He said require.
He said require, not recommend.
Chairman, Mr. Logan, I'm going to understand this from this aspect. Even if we see a development plan, we can't make any, whatever recommendations we were even to make would not stand up.
Well, I'm not saying that. If the fiscal court refers it to you to make recommendations, yes, you would if the fiscal court, in my opinion, listens to our request and says, "We're not doing it."
Right.
I don't know that we've got the authority to file a lawsuit to require them to send the development plan back.
Answered and cleared.
Thank you.
Any discussion, further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. Boggs.
No.
Ms. Cross.
No, I think it's a lovely idea, but I don't, I don't go for require.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
No.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
No.
Mr. May.
We vote no.
Mr. Sanderson.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
Uh, no.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Chairman Wright.
No.
Motion fails. Page 33.
Did you just change it to recommend?
Okay.
I'll, I'll like to recommend, make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to request the fiscal court to send the development plan for Duncan Road back to the Planning and Zoning Committee for approval.
Second.
Wait a minute.
That was request instead of require. Instead of require.
For approval?
For, for our recommendation approval.
What about review?
Review. We can check if, Patty, would you have better language?
I think review, review would be more appropriate.
I'll change the language to review.
Second motion.
Would you, yeah, I think, would you go ahead and read the motion as you understand it, maybe?
Yes. Request that fiscal court, request fiscal court to send the development plan to the planning commission for review and approval.
We have a second, right?
Yep.
Any discussion?
You said approval again.
Which, Patty, which language did you want changed?
I thought we probably shouldn't.
For recommendation and review?
Review and recommendations. I just think.
You don't want, you want to drop the approval?
Yeah, I think we.
Meaning it could be an approval or not.
I know that it won't make any difference. I think if we go for it in a more gracious manner, that we might get somewhere.
I'm, I'm amenable to that.
It's fine.
Second.
Well, that's not, we still have a motion on table, but second, all that, that's.
Well, we just changed the language.
If, if you're looking for neutral language, you may want to use review and action.
I'm up for any of these. We like to do an action better. Patty?
Better than recommendation?
Or you just say, "Review and action." And action could be a recommendation, or it could be just approval as is.
Okay, I'll live with that.
Okay.
You can withdraw your second.
Sherrod, what's your answer?
Ready?
All right.
Mr. Boggs.
No.
Ms. Cross.
I guess, yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
No.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager. Chairman Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes 9 to.
Before we go much further, we have several public hearings, more than two public hearings on the agenda, and we can't have that. So, we're going to have to read a motion to suspend the rules in order to have more than two public hearings on the agenda. Do I hear that motion from anybody?
Submotion.
So, maybe we can have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
We still have time, right?
Sir?
We still have time.
We do have a time limit.
No, very important.
No, we don't have, that'll come up later. That's another set of suspension of ballots. Okay, so, any discussion?
Say the motion again, please.
Oh, Patty, you want to read the most of it? It's two, it's actually two. Suspend the rules in order to have more than two public hearings on the agenda. We got about six. We're going to merge two of them, but we still got six.
You'll have five if you merge two.
Yeah, we're going to merge two and three, I think.
We took the first one off, didn't we?
We're still, it's still on. Okay. We have motion, a second.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Sit back. Mr. Lee. Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Chairman Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes 10.
Okay, while we're in the, while we're making motions, we're going to go ahead and combine two and three. That's the proposed text amendment on the farm product warehousing as regards to both the city and county. They're both very similar, well, exactly alike nearly.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, we do.
I'll make the motion that we combine public hearing two and three.
We have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion on motion? No discussion?
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager. Chairman Wright. Motion passes 10.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do you want to call the first item?
Yes, public hearing proposed text amendment to the City of Frankford zoning ordinance to amend Article 7, landscape ordinance, plant lists. You need to stand and be sworn in. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you'll give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
She states her name for the record later.
Eric Cockley.
What's your position with the city of Frank?
I'm Director of the Planning and Community Development Department.
In your capacity, you as the city, and you review the proposed text amendment with regard to the plant list.
I have.
And you reduce that review to writing.
I have.
And are there any additions or releases to your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
What, in fact, was your recommendations?
It was to, in accordance with the recommendation of the zoning update committee, to recommend approval of the text amendment and then send that item to the Board of Commissioners.
Sir, you have that with you tonight, that report?
I do.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that report replaced in the record in the litigational testimony.
Does the commission have any questions of the staff in regard to this?
Actually, I'll just have one. Does this plant list apply to both residential and commercial developments?
This is primarily for the plant list that applies when we review landscape plans for parking lots for non-residential developments and larger multifamily developments potentially. But in terms of what people can plant at their own homes, this does not apply, no.
No, this is not going to be your sworn in testimony. But is it, these are going to be, anybody having, in the public have any questions of Mr. Cockley that aren't, aren't supposed to? I don't think so, okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, Eric. Question, this is quite an extensive exhaustive list.
Indeed.
And I was just wondering during this process, was there an arborist involved in developing this list for us?
So, we had a whole series of folks that have much more expertise than I in this topic, that went through that list. I'm trying to recall from memory if specifically there was an arborist. Andrew Kamek, who is a certified arborist, was one of the people that helped generate the list and share that with me.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this, at this time, we'll have those who just spoke to oath and swear their testimony, come up and speak in address your concerns or lack of them.
Hi, my name is Chris Schimmler. I'm just here to recommend to you all that you pass this. This has been kind of in the works for many, many months and has gotten held up for various reasons beyond many of our control. This was originally proposed by RIP, the Remove Invasives Partnership. We have been working since 2017 to raise awareness about the problem with invasive species in the community. And we've worked since then to host workshops and community events where people can get out in parks or in people's properties that have volunteered to learn how to identify invasive species and then learn techniques about how to remove them. It's really been a great experience. We continue to do those, I think, since 2018. We've had a couple dozen workshops more lightly and involving over 300 people. So, it's really raised the awareness of what invasive species have done in our community and continue to do and the urgent need to, to treat them because they're a threat to kind of the stability of our, of our ecosystems and the stability of our riverbanks and creek banks in particular. So, but RIP was involved with kind of our local circle of expertise with arborists and botanists and others. And then, we turned it over to the landscape committee folks that involved, that was Andrew Kamek and Paula Murphy, to review it. So, this has been vetted well by people who have decades of expertise in the plants, the landscape list, the prohibited list, and the recommended list was sorely out of date. This just brings this up to speed with current science. So, when we're making recommendations to folks putting in a new Wendy's or whatever, they're not planting invasive species and making all of our, all of our problems worse. So, I heartily encourage you all to pass this. Thank you.
Excellent, John. We had several people who.
I'll just echo what Chris said. It's very important to pass this so that we are not adding to our problem for our ecosystems.
Thank you.
Deborah White.
I don't think so.
That's it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion. Text amendment to Article 7C, Frankford zoning ordinance and plant list containment contained within the landscape guidelines.
Second. We have to close the public hearing first.
Well, there was never a public, this is not a public hearing.
Yes, it is.
It's probably do, we do, it's, it is a not text amendment.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, thank you, motions.
Mr. Chairman. Make a motion that we adopt the summary of the testimony staff report as the summary, and we approve text amendment to Article 7C of Franklin zoning ordinance to amend the plant list contained in the landscape guidelines.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the text amendment? Any discussion? Any discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager. Chairman Wright.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, do this, make that time. 下一个
Continuation of public hearing proposed text amendment to Article 4 and 19 of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance related to the addition of Bourbon Barrel Warehouses as a subcategory of land use category 461, farm product warehousing and storage as a conditional use in the AG zoning district and establishing conditions governing such land use in the AG zone. And continuation of public hearing proposed text amendment to Article 4 and 19 of the Franklin County zoning ordinance related to the addition of Bourbon Barrel Warehouse as a subcategory of land use classification 461, farm product warehousing and storage as a conditional use in the AG zoning district and establishing conditions governing such land use in the AG zone.
Mr. Chairman, I'll commit motion.
Mr. Logan.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, after review of the circumstances, we've seen some middle to Mr. Logan on this request. I believe that.
Mr. Logan, I have a motion to be made.
Point of order, shunts that.
You are out of order.
A point of order, shunts that. Am I not right?
Is that right, Mr. Logan?
Mr. Chairman, who would you recognize? The chair recognizes either a motion or a point of order.
I recognize a motion, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this, both text, combined text amendments to send them to the city and county for approval for the following reasons. As the planning and zoning guidelines are currently written, we have no oversight as planning and zoning committee. This text amendment give us control over any construction of a, of any additional bourbon warehouses in Franklin County.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, any discussion?
I'd like to add two amendments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My first amendment would be that by the way the crow flies, 15 miles from any warehouses, liquor warehouses built in the AG zone, that Buffalo Trace be responsible for cleaning any and all housing, public, private, any and all buildings, public, private, any and all road signs that are all blacked out, and anything on people's property, including their cars. I'd like to have that voted on first.
Well, what is, okay, but this is not a Buffalo Trace. What if another?
I don't care who built, if it's a liquor warehouse.
Wild Turkey built a warehouse over on Western Park, Western, the...
In Franklin County.
Okay.
Any warehouse, liquor warehouse built in Franklin County, that Buffalo Trace be responsible for cleaning.
I don't think, how's that fit in, Mr.?
Do we have the right to ask that?
I don't think that amendment is, that's part of the discussion, but can that be a separate motion?
He can move to amend, but there will be a vote on the amendment as well as a vote on the question. I'm just saying he can kick it back and make him want. So if he's making an amendment, is there a second to his amendment? He's moving to amend. Is there a second to his? If not, it's a man failure.
Okay. Let's talk about that for a second. If you modify your amendment to say the owner of the warehouse in the area be responsible for the cleaning, I'll second it so you can get a vote on it. I'll change it to that as long as we do the 15 miles by the way the crow flies.
Okay.
I didn't complain about that. I just don't think that Buffalo Trace should be financially obligated. No, and I agree. If it's out of... Wild turkeys. Yes. Okay.
That's what I mentioned there, and that's why I...
I'll second that so you can get a vote.
Okay.
Are we still in discussion?
We are. We are.
Would that be more appropriate at the development plan for a condition as opposed to modifying a text amendment?
That's what he's doing. He's adding on to those conditions.
We don't have a condition.
Yeah, you do. In that agenda.
We don't know how many warehouses we're going to hold in, because that would be...
It doesn't matter about the number of warehouses they build. It's the ideal.
He's responsible for the current.
Well, we can't drop back to the current.
But you're saying now if you put this in and one single person, one single warehouse goes up, that one single person is now required to clean everything in their 15 miles.
Right. But you know they're not going to do one warehouse, so eliminate that area.
I know. I can't speak on that. I wouldn't think they would.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order.
Recognized.
I believe that this entire proceeding is out of order. The, we got to this as a place, apparently, from a commissioner asking to reconsider. And looking at this evidence, first of all, his email makes no mention of reconsideration. Second of all, and more importantly, Robert Schrull's order doesn't allow for that a day after, and I'll quote what it says here. If the voter is not reconsidered on the day it was taken and no meeting is held the next day, then it cannot be reconsidered.
That's not what my Robert Schrull says.
That's the subchapter, and it's also in the current amendment.
I'll be happy you correct. My rule is Robert Schrull also, and it does say, it says 24 hours.
It does not say 24, it says the same day.
I'm just saying my rules that I went by does say that.
That looks a little older than mine, but here's, here's the copy right here. Would you like to see this?
I'm curious if it's older, because I've used it a lot longer than you.
Would you like to see this?
No, I don't care what that was, but I'm going by the official that I have.
I don't...
If you want to challenge that, then you need to challenge...
I challenge that we're out of order by even entertaining this, that the motion to reconsider did not fall within the timeframe allowed by our very procedures. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to listen to you see this if you like.
If you're making a true motion on that, you may make it if it's seconded and if it's not.
I don't need to make a motion. The chair can rule on a point of order, can't he? Do I need to make a motion?
He can.
I prefer not to. I thought that needs to be brought up for a vote if that's not reconsidered by the commission.
What does that look like then, Mr. Logan?
You're the one making it, I'm not, Mr. Logan.
But we do have a, is Mr., are you saying, Mr., I don't think this could, at this point in time, Moody's point of order. We have a motion on the table, and we have somebody trying to make an amendment, that Mr. Sanderson does.
You're not going to act on this?
We had an intervening point of order, so we had to kind of get this back to where we are. I mean, Mr. Lusher's got a motion on the table. And we were talking about, I...
Are we not going to follow process with this commission?
Mr. Logan, first of all, this matter's on the table. It doesn't require reconsideration to take it from the table. A separate motion can be made.
I don't understand.
Read your Robert Schrull.
The way we, the way we got here was because you said the motion to reconsider happened. That's how we got here.
You could make a motion to reconsider within 24 hours. That's what my Robert Schrull said. That's what I'm saying about. However, this matter could still be removed from the table by motion, Mr. Logan.
But it shouldn't be here in the first place.
They make the motion differently.
That doesn't mean, no. I mean, they could do it tonight. It's on the table. We still move to take it off. I mean, tonight, we can retain it. We can approve or we can deny.
It's, but it's already, it's still on the table. If the motion, if the reconsideration was not appropriate, was out of order, correct?
No, no. It's still on the table, even if the motion is. We made the motion to reconsider and said it tonight to give plenty of notice so people could be here and this could be an open meeting.
You told us the process at the last meeting was we had to approve the motion to reconsider to then take it off the table. That's what we did at the last meeting.
That's what the motion says.
So we, if we hadn't, if we hadn't entertained the motion to reconsider, we wouldn't have taken it off the table.
That's not true. You can take it off the table. You can.
Why did we go through the whole reconsideration? I'm confused.
Someone made because there was a written reconsider. Nobody, I didn't recommend that, Mr. Logan. That was made by a member of the commission.
And the reconsideration was approved by a vote last week.
But then the subsequent motion, what was the subsequent motion?
To come back into, what was, what was your, was your motion made by you?
Motion was consider and recommend. We voted on that. We have to make a recommendation tonight.
Now, the motion last month to get us to here. No, but so the motion wasn't to take it off the table then?
We already took it off the table. That was the first.
Yes, which is, which I'm saying is out of order based on Robert Schrull.
If we go back to the original meeting, you were not in order to make the motion. You were not recognized. So you made the motion. We voted on it.
Not true. I was recognized by the chair.
You, we can all go back and look at that on tape. And you were confused by the motion after you were done with it. So.
And you admitted that, Mr. Logan, it was not the language you wanted to use. Okay, that's another...
Chair, are you ruling that Robert Schrull doesn't say that?
I'm going to rule by what the council says today. I can't.
Well, we've got...
I would say that I have said Robert Schrull.
That's going to have to be what goes to court if we get challenged, right? And so would you like to see this, to see, make sure before we continue on?
I believe what you read was correct. I also believe what I read was correct. Now, maybe...
That can't be. Both of those two things can't be the truth.
How would you know if you haven't read mine?
No, I'm saying both of them can't be true. Both of, if it's...
Both of them may not be correct. One could be wrong, one could be wrong.
But our country is normally live...
It's dangerous. We're going to get challenged and we're going to lose because...
Mr. Lusher.
So on this, on this issue, I think it goes back to, you know, I don't care which book, which version we're talking about. The purpose of a reconsideration is to allow a change during the meeting that the original vote happens. Or if the body is continuing to meet 24 hours later, within 24 hours to do it the next day. So it's to take care of a correction basically immediately, and that's not what happened in this case. In this case, there was a request for a special meeting to address this topic with not a reconsideration within 24 hours of the original vote. So it seems to me that the action that we took last time was not seen appropriate. We have a, we have this item on the agenda tonight where we could have it, we could take it off.
We don't have the same item on the agenda, though. We voted last week to approve Mr. May's motion to reconsider, and that was it. So that's where we are. Right? That's where we are with that.
We also have a motion and a second.
And we have a motion and a second by what motion made by Mr. Lusher. Okay. And in intervening time, Mr. Sanderson has a couple of amendments, and then we have a point of order by Mr. Logan. Okay, so this is a, we, Mr. Jackson, how would you back this up if you were here up here? You're going to leave a second?
It is fortunate that I am not the chair. I don't wish to be the chair. I think the chair and legal counsel should clarify and make a determination on this issue, and we should move forward.
I think we should. We have a duly ruled, I, Mr. Logan, I generally have to go along with the counsel. I don't know what pages or if you want to go.
So there's something so important to our future, and you're willing to overlook a discrepancy and not figure it out?
Well, I don't know, Mrs. Sanders, you're not. It's Mr. Logan. It's a trial. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Chris, I can't.
And the book that's being followed by our legal counsel will be the one that we use.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there is one extra part that I want to add to that.
Okay, now, you're, okay.
I'm on my first amendment, that it has to be done every three years, that they had to do it every three years. In other words, they just can't do it once and not do it for the rest of their lives. They have to do it every three years in order to keep the properties clean. Mr. Sanderson, I don't think I can offer a second if we're at that. What would you recommend? Them be able to do it once, make millions of dollars and do it once and stop? It's, I mean, every time they build another warehouse, we're dealing with the same issue. I can't even read the road signs on my road now because of this. I don't know. The driver's manual basically gives you instructions on how to determine what a sign says. If it's black, how do I see it? Based upon its shape, not based on... Oh, shree. Stop sign. It has eight sides to it. Nothing else has eight sides to it but stop sign. So what would you recommend, what would you recommend them do? That's in your, that's in your driver's manual. So what would you recommend them be responsible for? I think if we leave the motion as is, vote it up or down, and allow some latitude for staff to take a look at that, if it passes. Okay. I'll do that then. We'll leave it as is. So it's been made and seconded.
That's, that's, motions have been made second to amend the motion made by Mr. Lusher, which was put out, I mean, it's... Mr. Logan, Mr. Lusher made a motion. Okay, and he got a second. In the meantime, Mr. Sanderson has amendments. Now, to get that...
And that's been seconded.
What's that?
And that is seconded.
So we're voting on the amendments to a motion that's not been approved by Mr. Lusher's motion hasn't been approved yet.
He is saying that the motion that was made be amended.
Okay.
If it's not, then go on the original motion.
I got you. Okay. Is there any, now, we have a second on Mr. Sanderson's motion. Okay. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Any discussion? If there is no discussion, I'll say to you, please.
Yes. Mr. Boggs.
No.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes. I second it.
Mr. Lee.
No.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
No, with explanation is I believe that those requirements should come to us as each of the developments come to back to us as conditional use. We should look at all those individual, not as a blanket. So no.
Mr. May.
No.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Swager.
Yes.
Chairman Wright.
No, I don't want to hear Mr. Lusher's concerns. That's why I'm not having a vote.
Motion passes six to five.
Can we add, can we...
No, I have another amendment. I have another amendment. My second amendment's this, that any and all warehouses, liquor-built warehouses, that are built in Franklin County by any distillery maker, be required to install the new filtration system that's available on all their warehouses.
Exactly. That is really good.
There is a filtration system out now that is available for them to install on their warehouses that takes the fungus, the mold, and everything out of the air.
Exactly.
And the warehouses need to have that on them to stop it.
And by the way, that's millions and millions and millions of dollars to do that.
A thousand different things. Pretty vague, Mr. Sanderson.
Well, explain to me what's vague. If there's a filtration system built...
This is going to be in law for a while. New, new changes every day, doesn't it?
It is not new.
If, if, if the fungus goes away, then they don't have to put it on there. But as long as this fungus and the mold continues to grow and continues to be a problem in Franklin County...
The wording, new filtration system, seems awfully vague to me.
Do you want the name for the filtration system?
Well, you want to put something aside with new?
This system exists.
Ma'am, you don't have a voice. No, this is not, you're not up here. You do not get to speak.
You have not let us talk.
No, no, you're not going to talk. This is not, this is not, this is not a...
Why not?
Don't get to talk right now. Nobody else is getting to talk. I'm not picking on you. Go ahead, Ms. Sanderson.
So how do I identify it without identifying? Do what?
Thermal oxidizers. They take the ethanol and it won't let it out into the, into the environment and does then it does...
I know it's there. I just don't remember what the name of it.
It's a thermal oxidizer.
All right. Mr. Sanderson, if you're going to make this motion, might want to get your details back a little bit. You're going to make a motion. I know you're going to have to get the specific model and that, you know, but...
All right. What'd you call it?
Thermal oxidizer.
All right. I'd like to make sure that every new warehouse, liquor warehouse, be built, have the...
Thermal oxidizer.
Thermal oxidizer installed on it as their filtration system. I'll again get you a vote. Second. You're a good man.
Now, this would be, this would be for, let's look at your first motion to compare it, your first amendment. This would be in addition, this was...
Right. The first motion was to clean up what they messed up already. The second motion is to stop it completely.
So a person could be opposed to first amendment but like the fact that you have an oxidizer.
Right.
Oh, you want to go ahead and read the motion?
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lee.
No, reasonable vote is. It needs to come up during the commission with something in front of it.
Mr. Looney.
I'm sorry. Can you start over?
What?
He's calling the roll.
Are you calling roll call? You have free of motion. I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Looney.
What's your vote?
No.
Mr. Lusher.
I'd no. For the same reason as I gave the first ones beyond our purview. There are other people that have more expertise than the people in this room, specifically the ones in the gallery.
William May.
No.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager.
I'll just say that for a vote is that if we get the terminology a little bit wrong, we'll have an opportunity. And if this happens to move forward, then I think we'll have an opportunity to correct that language, to get it specific, but I'll vote yes.
Chairman Wright.
I'm a little low because I think that the language is just not specific enough. That's too, too, in anticipation, it needs to be revised. I'm saying some... No.
Motion passes six to five.
Can I ask Mr. Logan?
We have the original motion plus the...
Can I ask Mr. Logan a question about the, what's in here, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Logan, the conditions that are in the text amendment is written, number five calls for planning commission review. That the conditional use permit for warehouses shall be reviewed by the planning commission, shall have, shall have their development plans reviewed by the planning commission. By understanding that our ability to ask for the planning commission... By understanding that our ability to ask for the planning commissions, for conditionally used permits to come before us is very narrowly divided, are you confident that this would fit squarely within there and we absolutely can do that?
I believe that this ordinance has passed to include that language, saying that the conditionally used permits under us, then all conditionally used permits with regard to that come to us. Meaning, yes, I think we're going to have those come to us if it's in the ordinance. Now, if the city... We're only giving a recommendation, Mr. Logan. And if the city decides to modify this or change this, I can't tell you what...
No, I'm just making sure that a city ordinance won't trump state law, that state law doesn't prohibit us from putting this requirement in here is the question.
I have no knowledge of any state law that precludes us from placing that in the ordinance.
Okay. That's why I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to where we have... We have the original motion made by Mr. Lusher with the two amendments.
Correct.
And we have a total re-vote on that motion with him. And we passed the amendment.
Can we add amendments? Could I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
We passed one amendment.
Both amendments passed.
Yes, both amendments passed.
Senator Lottin.
I would like to move that we add as an amendment on there that in regards to this, that the requirements for applicants have the same criteria typically associated with the zone change. The traffic impact studies, environmental studies, drainage analysis, that it follows a similar pathway with the similar requirements that a zone change would have.
Is that your second? I'll second that, Bill. We have a second.
There's some quizzical looks. We may want to get Eric or Robert to... I don't know if they have any...
Do you mean topically the review, like the procedure we would use internally? Or are you talking about the procedure?
All of the requirements for submittals, public notice, hearing, make sure that it's a very similar process to get there with the burden of studies and analysis by traffic, et cetera, that would go into a zone change request.
In addition to the conditionally used permit requirements or in lieu of that?
In addition to. I'm assuming the burden's higher on the zone change.
Will there be redundants?
Yeah. So things that are not included, bring that up to that standard. But it's not a zone change. It's conditionally used, but it would have the same criteria.
So you're asking us to analyze the class of the conditionally used criteria of these ordinance, as well as the comprehensive plan and all its zoning policies. Is that right?
Yeah.
I totally lost what the amendment is.
It's to bring the standard up.
I think my second...
For the... Traffic study.
Okay, we have discussions. Mr. Logan?
Good night, sir.
Oh, we have a second.
The ten seconds.
Ten seconds. Okay. On that motion, do we have any discussion? I would like to say that that sounds like something that might need to be done. It's maybe explored more, Mr. Logan, and working with the staff. And it seems like to me it's a strong amendment to just put forth about any...
Well, certainly, I would... Yeah, certainly, Mr. Chair. I would like to spend an hour or two with staff and go through those things side by side, which we would do in a zoning update committee. But, you know, we're here where we are tonight, so I was trying to, you know, speed the process along.
Yeah, this is for the recommended text amendment, so I understand what you're motioning.
Okay, right. This is...
It's not a comparison. This is his motion to add to the criteria. Is that correct? You're nodding. You're not saying anything.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I got in trouble last time I did this, but I'll do it again, just because there are two things that I'd like to offer or propose. The first would be in the proposed 19.161 section of the proposed text amendment. The purpose, in all of the areas that allow the construction of distilled spirit warehouses on agricultural property, added some language as such. And I don't know if it's appropriate. You all have to say whether it is or is not appropriate. But to add to the purpose section is a separate sentence. And that language is this. It says, "This type of use shall not be considered as altering the agriculture or residential character of its particular area and shall not be justification for zoning map amendments. Conditionally permitted agriculture, horticulture, and silviculture industries shall be subject to specific restrictions," which are the conditions that are there. But what it's saying is simply that a determination to allow distilled spirit warehousing to be constructed on agricultural property does not assume the right to have a zone change, but rather is a specifically conditioned opportunity granted to the constructor to allow that to be done in that particular location, given that it meets all other requirements that are outlined in those conditions. Now, on each one of those, that language is there. And it seemed to have served all of those locations or counties very well. And it seems to me that if it's been tried in all of those locations, that we should consider adding either that same language or similar language to what we're proposing, should it go to the commission of fiscal court for consideration. Our purpose should be to make sure that we are clear on what it is that we are suggesting or adopting as a proposed action, as opposed to leaving it so flexible that anybody can't do that. I propose that we amend the paragraph on the purpose to include that particular sentence, not... Which is an add-on. It's not an instead of. And I'm actually reading from the Owensboro Metropolitan Zoning Ordinance.
Mr. Jackson, is this applying to... Paul has a motion and a second on the floor. Is that applying? You wanting to amend Paul's motion?
No. No. We hadn't voted on Paul's yet.
I asked you if you were making a third amendment.
Well, I will be making a third amendment.
You got to repeat all of it.
That's all right. That's all right. I got it. I got it right.
Voting on the third now?
Okay. We're... Wait a minute. Okay. Repeat that, please.
Mr. Looney?
Mr. Looney?
The third.
Um...
No, you second. You second. Yes, I second that.
Same required staff to do a review.
So any conditionally used requests for urban warehouses would meet the same burden of requirements as a zone change in terms of traffic impact studies, environmental analysis, et cetera?
Right. And it was seconded by Mr. Lusher.
Yes, I did.
And there's no... We had discussion. Any further discussion?
Let's vote.
No, we get it.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, we're going to...
Now, can I do mine?
We have a motion with three amendments that has to be...
He wants to...
You got to have... You got to have a bill. Okay. You're standing number four.
Yes.
All right.
I mean, what we're doing here is we're designing the recommendation that goes to fiscal court and the city commission. Once we design, and if we send it, then the time is over to do anything to the conditions as they are written or to the text amendment itself as written. We... If we don't do it now, there is no opportunity.
Are you reiterating the court amendment?
I am. That's a prelude.
Do we have a second or Mr. Jackson?
But, now, yeah. My motion... My motion...
The Owensboro provisions is what I thought.
No.
Well, it's a piece of the Owensboro.
Okay.
And do I need to read it again?
You just need to tell me what the section is.
It's section 58. And this section, and I'll read it again for members of the commission, or you can read it. They can probably understand your reading much better than mine.
And are you including the ABCs underneath it?
No.
Just the...
Just the language.
Is it 80 or 2?
Which then also refer back to the language in item 57, the last sentence.
As part of the application process?
Yeah.
Are you removing the acreages there, Mr. Jackson?
Uh, well, in the... In the public hearing, I asked about the acreage. And in most of those, the acreage was a minimum of 100. But our staff suggested 200.
Right. I was reading 58 here. It says 25 and 50 acres is what I was getting confused on in the Owensboro.
No, I didn't include that.
That's not included. Okay. We need to maybe read through exactly what the amendment states.
Do you agree with the amendment exactly?
Exactly. Loudly for everybody.
No, you don't read it.
Okay. I'll read it. Here it is. Listen closely, please. "This type of use shall not be considered as altering the agriculture or residential character of its particular area and shall not be justification for zoning map amendments. Conditionally permitted agriculture, horticulture, and silviculture industries shall be subject to specific restrictions." Specific is my word.
Which refers to that, Mr. Jackson?
I beg pardon?
Which section is that?
58.
58.
58.
Of Owensboro.
Is there a sub?
There are some subs below that, but the subs that I'm thinking about are those that you have... The staff has already identified.
So it's the last sentence of the statement of section 58, correct?
It's the last two statements. This type...
Fourth line.
Yeah.
End of it starts this type.
It's 58.
It's 58.
Include all that?
Did you say you were adding 57?
No, I said it corresponds to 57. And so rather than identifying letter A, B, C, and D as below that, I substituted the word "specific restrictions" there.
Should be subject to the specific restrictions. I'm the second. That amendment.
And are you including, Mr. Jackson, the A through E?
No.
Okay.
Because our staff has already identified conditions in its draft.
Okay. Okay. That is... Is that amendment been worked on? Mr. Sewell, she's... Okay.
Thank you. And I'll say...
Does there a second?
Yes.
That is the second.
Mr. Boggs?
What just...
We had a discussion, did all that. We have a second, no discussion.
I would certainly appreciate, since I'm behind everybody here, reading that amendment good and loud so everybody can hear it articulated in the same sequence.
Sean, you want to read it?
I mean, I can read it, but I think...
Read this is going to be bold, all right? As Ms. Sewell has it.
At the standard, 1 through 13.
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion is to change the language within the regulations to establish that this type of use shall not be considered as altering the agriculture or residential character of its particular area and shall not be justification for zoning map amendments. Conditionally permitted agriculture, horticulture, and silviculture industries shall be subject to the specific restrictions.
Uh, Mr. Sanderson?
And that statement goes up in the purpose, which is at the beginning of that.
Yes.
Yeah. I just question, Mr. Jackson, that you've included agriculture, horticulture, silviculture, which that's not...
That just expands what we...
So in addition to urban bear warehouses? Let's make sure we're not backdooring ourselves accidentally.
Are there any further questions?
I don't know, but it's not urban.
Any further? This is amendment number four, right?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager? Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 1.
Oh, Mr. Chair. I'm going to offer a few amendments, but I want to start off by saying that I think what is being proposed overall by trying to address urban warehouses and agricultural zoning is the wrong approach. The reason I say that, we have had this issue for years where we put miscellaneous things that have nothing to do with farming or agriculture within the ag zone just to be able to accommodate an individual landowner or a person that wants to do something with the property. So I think this really clouds the agricultural zoning by trying to take this approach. I have put together the recommendation that we create a totally separate zoning category to address this and to talk about all these conditions that we're talking about tonight. So... So, what I'm gonna do is offer a few of the conditions that I would like to see in a totally different zoning category, but I'm going to make the motion to amend this one so that they're included when we vote, if that makes sense. So, first off, one of the requirements in the rural area is for buildings to be, no tall, buildings and structures to be no taller than forty feet tall. So, uh, I'm going to make the motion to limit the height of urban warehouses to no more than forty feet. This is something that will help protect the rural character if one of these were built out in rural areas, as opposed to seventy feet or whatever, as opposed to the height that we're allowing right now. So, that's my first motion.
That's your, what's your first amendment?
Amendment.
You moved to amend, so this will be the fifth amendment?
Yes.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the fifth, fifth amendment?
Uh, Mr. Swager, does this apply to all agricultural storage, product storage, and just urban warehouses? Because my tobacco barn is forty, more than forty feet high.
I believe the, the current regulation for AG height requirements is forty feet.
Mine's more than forty feet.
Uh, well, I can't, I can't answer for that.
So, that's my question.
That's what our regulations.
Is this, is that, is that correct, or?
There are extensions in our six. Silo, theme, one. We're looking at the other exceptions.
And, and, you know, uh, just, just, I mean, if you think about, if you go and look at the size of the current ones that are built, they're quite intrusive to the rural landscape. And part, part of what we want, I think what we want to do is to protect the rural landscape outside of our suburban and urban areas. So, if these are to be built, we need to limit the scale in which they're built.
Motion's been made.
If there's a second, is there any further discussion? Any questions to ask? Mr. Looney?
Well, just as a general comment, is that this is part of the challenge with doing this in this environment, is this is a particular item that I'd like to get feedback from parties interested in building buildings, to understand what ramifications this may have. But in this setting, we're not afforded that opportunity to, to have a dialogue. We're giving, we're just throwing things up there with no ability to understand what impact it may have on financial feasibility. And so, it makes it very difficult to, that's why I wanted to go to the zoning update committee, so we can have a dialogue with people to really understand if we say two hundred acres, forty feet, whatever, that, what that really means, so.
Well, yeah, Ms. Looney, I appreciate that, but I bet that same discussion on feasibility may have, I didn't, I didn't hear you mention that when we're talking about scrubbing buildings from this, and I'm not saying that I'm for or against that, but we're gonna get the feasibility issue.
Well, this is a general statement to everything we're doing with this right now. It would, it's not, we're not able to have a full dialogue.
I voted.
Sorry, I waited too late for my comment, my apologies.
And I agree with you. Yes.
You, you agree with?
I don't think it's fair to anybody, honestly.
Okay.
Bet you need it.
Yeah, all right, so any other, any other discussion?
Motion's been made.
And I'm, I'm looking for, no, not motions for, any other, any discussion?
Yeah, so, one last comment, that said, Woodford County has a thirty-five foot limit on there, so it can't be gone, that's also a hazard.
Is there any further discussion on this fifth amendment? Is that correct, Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Boggs?
No.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No. The proposed draft limit the height to thirty-five feet.
I believe it's seven.
So, why would I wanna do forty if it's limiting to thirty-five?
No, it's seventy, it's seventy feet, I believe, the code, it's the code.
Mr. Jackson?
It's seven.
Okay, the bulk density and height in this draft shows a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Now, I, I, I'm not exactly sure.
You gotta read the G, except.
Except barns, silos, steeples, water towels, windmills.
Distilled spirit warehouses.
Ah, I didn't get that.
That takes it to the code, which I believe is seven.
Would you draw my motion and, and say, okay, yeah.
So, that takes it to seven? Seven is the code.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
No.
Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Sanderson?
I don't know.
Um, yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, this is amendment number?
Six.
Six.
Okay. Let me give a place here again.
Yes, sir.
The, the current proposal calls for a density of one warehouse per eight acres. Um, in contemplating that, I feel like that's very, a little bit nebulous in terms of what kind of performance we are gonna expect, or what we're trying to achieve. I would like to replace number three with some substitute language that looks at, rather than a one warehouse per eight acres, is the maximum amount of impervious surface as part of the development plan. Okay, so that would include roads, buildings, et cetera. One warehouse per eight acres could yield an impervious surface of three acres per every acre. Has a potential to do it. It may be less, but it has a potential. So, my rec, my motion for the amendment.
Your amendment is?
Not, not, yeah, all right, I'll do it.
My amendment is to limit the impervious surface for urban warehousing to no more than twenty percent of the total land.
Can, can you clarify, when you say that, when you say twenty percent of the entire land?
Correct.
So, if it's three hundred acres, no more than twenty percent of that, three hundred acres?
Correct.
Could be roads. Could be.
That's sixty acres.
That's right.
Currently, what is the percentage?
There is no, it's not.
Parking. Our parking.
Very exact.
Oh, no second, I'll have a second, all right.
Second.
The sixth amendment, okay.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the sixth amendment? Any questions? Any question?
Yeah, I'll just say that part of the reason is that, once again, this is agricultural land, and, uh, we don't know what, what the future of the bourbon industry, or the future of whatever distilled spirits are that might decide to build. And so, we want to be able to protect as much land as possible should that property change in the future.
Then, then also.
It would include parking, smaller buildings, warehouse building, roads.
Non-grass.
Anything that's impervious, asphalt, metal.
All right, is there any more discussion? Any more questions? No, I'm asking, there you go. Or do you want to read it? Do you want, you have your amendment, sixth amendment, or you have it?
The motion was to limit the impervious surface of, of the development to no more than twenty percent of the total land area. Mr. Boggs?
No.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
No.
Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Sanderson?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Mr. Swager? Chairman Wright?
No.
Motion fails.
Do we, do we have any further amendments?
Can't think of any.
All right, he's, Mr. Men, I think Mr. Swager's working on one by here.
I should've had.
It's a technical term.
I think, I think you have.
I think I'm wrong.
Okay. So, we have six, we have Mr. Lusher's original proposal with six amendments, now, Miss.
We have five.
Five, five, five. Fifth, okay, do we, uh, we, we need to have the, and the five have been, I'll vote them on, and how many were, were they all passed?
Now, I'll, I'll bet the last one passed.
Oh, the last one, four, five. So, we have a motion, and I guess basically, do you want to have to go here and read the motion and the amendments as all together, I mean, yes?
It would be a vote on the motion with all amendments.
With all amendments, that, with, no specific, no read, okay, okay. All the amendments. On, on the amendments that passed, the first, the first four.
Four.
First five, five, the six, one fatal, okay.
Mr. Boggs?
I'm voting on the amendments.
Yes. Yes.
Are we back to the original amendment, back to the original with the five?
Back to the original with all the amendments.
With all the amendments.
Only votes for all of them.
For all that passed, all five.
Would you go ahead and read the original, not, not the amendments?
The original, okay, the original.
Hey, can y'all hold it down, please?
The original motion was made by Mr. Lusher to send the text amendments to the city and county for consideration and approval.
And we have these five, the amendments that go with.
And then there are five amendments.
And so, includes these five amendments?
The first one is the fifteen miles, um, all buildings have to be clean with the fifteen miles of the new warehouses. The second amendment was that urban warehouses have to have a thermal oxidized sys, filtration system installed when all new warehouses built. The third amendment was the same requirement to, to review these requests with using the same requirement as zone change in addition to, um, well, I can't really say that one out loud yet, um, but use the same as you would a development plan, that's what it is, when they are doing the review. My staff is doing the review. The fourth one is to change the language and add to the purpose statement to establish that this type of use shall not be considered as altering the agriculture or residential character of its particular area, and shall not be justification for zoning map amendments. Conditionally permitted agriculture, horticulture, and silviculture industries shall be subject to specific, to the specific conditions. And the fifth amendment was to limit the height of the buildings to no taller than forty feet.
So, that map section, I think you can go here.
Yeah. Mr. Boggs?
I, I did have one question. The original, Mr. Lusher's original, was the last word on it approval, or was that from the earlier?
No, it is for approval, and there were conditions after that, with these amendments attached to them.
Yes.
Ms. Cross? Oh, goodness, I don't know. Um.
You got three options, yes, no, or abstain?
I'm thinking, um, you know.
I, I think this is, is, basically, the motion is to approve the original to allow urban warehouses and agriculture with all these amendments.
Okay, so, since I really don't think this text amendment is a good idea, I will both no.
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
And these are going vote to city and county? Uh, yes.
Mr. Swager?
For a vote, I'm just gonna say that, uh, I'm pretty disappointed with the process. I think this was a model of how not to do things. Uh, I've been around long enough to see how things can work and how things can't. It should've been done, uh, in a committee setting. This, this was a proposal that was put forth by industry, and I understand why they did that, because they have a business that they want to advance. But the way you make good legislative decisions is that you have discussion and debate, not in a setting like this. So, what's being, uh, about to be adopted tonight, uh, or recommended for approval to the fiscal board and city commission, is, uh, is this was put together in the wrong way, and I hope that both those bodies take a different approach, rather than just adopting it as, uh, as it's been outlined here. So, my vote's no.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to three.
Okay, that's secure, would you please introduce the next?
Continuation of public hearing, TT of F. Frankfurt Incorporated is requesting a zone amendment of nine point two six acres on Democratic Drive from Professional Office District CO to General Commercial District CG, being all of lots number three, number fourteen, number twenty, number twenty-one, and number twenty-two of the Everwood Office Park subdivision of Record and Quack Cabinet A, Slide three thirty, in the office of the Plainfield County Court.
Yes, this is the fourth. Please, here's a vote.
I have a motion to take the item off the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody following down here? Two three and a half of Frankfurt, that's, that's the one that filed, that's about to connect the bottom of the minute, right? Okay, any, any discussion?
You don't wanna discuss, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The motion should be to adopt the summary of the public hearing.
So, it's not going to be, okay, okay, that's the.
So, I will amend my motion to the adoption.
Of the summary, okay. Okay, but I think the motion is, are we separating these, after the motion taken out from the table, and then a motion to adopt the summary?
We can do it either way.
As merged as you want, okay, okay. Okay, we have a motion to take that out to the table and, and to adopt the summary. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, uh, we'll take a vote void, uh, vote void on the other.
David Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion's unanimous.
Okay, now we have, that's a motion on findings of fact.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, put together a motion for three different findings of fact, whether we vote on them all at once or not, but that would be to, for the recommendations, the staff recommendations, one, two, and four, that number one, the comprehensive plan for the land use plan, that's the main, the property, the regional retail employment center. Number two, the general commercial zone district, it's appropriate zone district for regional retail, needs definition. And number four, proposed zone map amendment is an agreement with the comprehensive plan.
Not number two, correct?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? Note that on the finds of fact, uh, uh, number three was not mentioned in Mr. Louis', I mean, Mr. Swager's.
Page forty. Page fourteen.
Uh, page.
Fourteen of fifteen.
Forty-fourteen of fifteen, if you wanna look at that? Okay. Now, do we need to have, yeah, we can do it. I, I think we can go all these at one time, if you think, okay. So, map secretary, would you go ahead and please?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes eight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Based on, uh, five, I make, I make the motion five facts, six.
Second.
You wanna roll call vote or vote void? Let's go, let's go, let's see if I, okay. All votes on the table, take your voice, say aye. In the opposition, sign. Who's that, Mr. Sanderson, who's that, who's that?
No, clear.
Thank you, Earl, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lee.
I make the motion, I make the motion based on five facts, one, two, and four, that we, that we recommend approval, fiscal court for the zone map change, from PO to CG for lots three, four, three, fourteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two of the Edgewood Off Park subdivision.
Inglewood.
Inglewood, excuse me, can't read, Inglewood Office Park subdivision, uh.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? I'd like to ask the staff a question, if this does follow up from last time. One, one of the issues that we talked about last time was, um, the issue of having sidewalks for the development plan, um, and just for clarifications, that if we, if I don't propose an amendment here, isn't a requirement to put a sidewalk in, as part of the development plan?
I believe so.
The motion, second?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah. Well, the infrastructure's already been adopted by the fiscal court.
Say that again.
The public infrastructure has already been adopted by the fiscal court without sidewalks present, be happy to work with developers to have sidewalks. As far as this development, that they will need to know.
Okay.
They won't connect any other sidewalk, uh, other than what's on the other side of the, because on the other side of the, the whole subdivision.
Right, I understand that, and we gotta start somewhere, for whatever reason, so, um, I'd like to offer an amendment to require sidewalk be part of the development plan on both properties, all properties.
You're making an amendment to what, there is, we're making findings of fact?
Right.
Well, the findings of fact cease.
We've already said.
So this is a, it's a motion to approve, and I was gonna put.
A condition on it.
A condition.
You, you may move to add a condition to that, if that would actually.
Right, right, yes. So, make a motion to, uh, require that sidewalks be included as part of the development plan.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any, any comments on that?
I, I agree with what Mr. Swager said.
Okay.
I mean, if you don't ever start somewhere, you never get to where you wanna be, so.
Who's second at that motion?
Uh, who's the second, uh, Mr. Looney, the, we, we second all of them.
Yes, I second.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright? Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Which one?
Oh, this is actually, that, that last one was a, a, it's a condition by Mr., uh, Mrs. Rigger. This is actually, yeah, this is actually a vote.
Condition passed, this is, the, the.
There's a motion for a zone change.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
The, the condition passed, it's, it's, it's.
Public hearing, Cardwell eight twenty-seven LLC is requesting a zone map amendment from rural residential B District RB to rural high density northern family districts RH of a twenty-five point four five acre property at eight twenty-seven Cardwell, where the property is voiced, is already identified as PVA map number zero three six dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero one two point zero zero. This is a county item.
Mr. Judah, if you state your name in record, please.
Ben Judah.
What's your position, county clerk?
I'm the planning supervisor.
In your capacity, planning supervisor, here with you, an application denied with regard to Cardwell.
Yes.
Did you make a written recommendation along with, uh, your request for your approval of this?
I have.
And what, are there any changes, additions, or additions to that staff report?
Uh, I do have a correction to note on page thirteen, um, under goal seven, my narrative, I incorrectly cited section two point oh three oh seven D, it should have been three point oh three oh seven D of the, uh, subdivision and development plan regulations.
Does that change your recommendation?
No, sir.
Uh, would you briefly indicate to the commission, uh, the item and what the recommendation was then?
Sure. So the request before you tonight is to rezone, uh, to a multifamily zoning designation to allow for, uh, a three hundred eighty-four unit apartment complex at a site that most recently, uh, was home to a manufactured housing park. Surrounding land use is a mixture of residential to the north and east, and some office and, um, medical uses towards the south. The site is in between those less intense residential uses to the north and the slightly more intense office uses and commercial uses to the south, and, uh, this should create a transition zone in between the two uses, uh, which, under the future land use section, suburban residential zoning, uh, future land use designation that this property is under, uh, land use guideline two, um, note two, it does encourage this type of buffer transition use. And so with that, um, I had three findings of fact, uh, recommended, uh, one, comprehensive plan designates a property as suburban residential, two, uh, rural high density zoning designation is inappropriate, uh, for the suburban residential land use designation, and three, the zone map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan, and I'd like to enter my report to the record, and be happy to take any questions.
So in the, in the development guidelines for this type of future land use area, um, number five talks about developments with a, a mixture of housing type should be encouraged. Okay, so, uh, obviously, what we're seeing before us, uh, in terms of the concept, is just apartment, apartment buildings, is that how I understand it?
Correct, one type of housing.
One type of housing, okay. And how, how do you see this as a, uh, you mentioned the buffer or transition, how, how do you see this as a buffer? Could you explain what you mean by that?
Sure, so to the north, you have single family homes. This is slightly denser, being multifamily, and then to the south, you have a different land use type, um, in the future land use designation is different as well. It's got those office uses, there's a senior care facility there, so this just kinda provides that transition from those commercial office uses to the residential, single family homes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Lee.
So you got twenty-four units per acre for RH, existing zoning, how many units per acre can go on that?
The minimum lot size, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but the minimum lot size is, you give me a moment.
My question is a pretty big jump.
It is an increase in density, however, the applicant's line proposing just north of fifteen units per acre, uh, which is well within what the zone would allow for.
If we do the zone change, without, this doesn't have a plan in front of us, he can put up to twenty-four units per acre, he can bring up, it has to come back before us, is that correct?
If you require it.
If we require it. So, he can say what he wants to, we're putting zoning, but could put as many as twenty-four units per acre on, is that correct?
Potentially, that's what the zone would allow for.
Thank you very much, Chairman, one more question. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lee.
So I'm gonna follow up, Mr. Judah, a little bit, what Mr. Swager was asking, so I'm struggling with the buffer piece, because in the land use guidelines on page four, it talks about the buffer transition between lower intensity residential use and more intense multifamily. To the west of this is AG, so I'm, I'm struggling to figure out how this more intense from RB is a buffer to AG. I see it going the other way, if you were taking this to the east, but, but looking to the west, that doesn't seem to fit.
I feel like it is a north-south transition, um.
Why not to the west?
The Julian farm is to the west, and, um, if Mrs. Julian has her way, that'll never develop, so this is the edge of western development.
I don't know that that's an appropriate statement, um, but at the same point, you got the whole side of that that's AG, correct? The west side?
That's correct, it's AG.
And so how does this provide a buffer between RB and AG? How does it become less a, a step down in intensity to go from RB to this, to AG?
So I, I kinda view this as the fringe, western fringe of suburban development for the county. I don't anticipate a lot of westward development, so it's more of a north-south transition than an east-west.
I don't know that that fits, but okay, it doesn't seem jive, but. You have to take all sides into consideration, not just one direction. The, Mr. Chairman? So, and I know we're probably gonna get, I know there's a traffic study, that right now it's proposed to have a single entrance at the current entrance location, is that correct?
So the concept plan that was provided does indicate one entrance, however, the number of units that they're proposing would require a second entrance, which has, at this time, not been established. At a development plan phase, that's when we would make them decide where they're gonna put that entrance.
Could that be done to, there's a property that's undeveloped that borders this, um, could it stub out there, or does it have to be operational, um, meaning both entrances have to be accessible right away?
Uh, I believe the code requires for two entrances for access.
So you can't, you, you, a stub out couldn't, you couldn't speculate on the second one, you'd have to have two, two that are.
It's two, two, two entrances to serve the property, yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Judah, this is the plan.
That's the concept plan that's been provided.
Is it possible to have a second entrance?
They don't have true road frontage, but I don't wanna speculate on how they're gonna accomplish it. There could be other, nor, to the north, to the east, and to the south, there's, uh, vacant land.
Mr. Judah, also, I, I don't think this is speculative, but it there seems to be a little speculation on the contention on sewer upgrade, does that seem to be any thing against a little circular?
So I do have a letter that's been provided by the applicant stating that they're aware of the sewer capacity issue, and that they, they plan to time out their construction, uh, in accordance with having that be made available, and they won't occupy or be able to occupy it with that capacity.
Anybody have any questions, or the questions are staff?
Yeah, what's the two exit requirement? Uh, just define why that's the case. What's the, what's the intent there?
So I believe it's because the number of units is high, uh, you're gonna have more vehicles in and out, you can provide multiple points of entry, uh, I would also imagine that emergency services would enjoy having multiple points of entry, especially, um, you know, if there's some sort of emergency on one side of the development versus the other, they could get in quick, more quickly.
It does, but it doesn't relate necessarily, could be right next to each other, on the same public road, it would be satisfying criteria, so it does have to do with how it impacts the road network.
It doesn't suggest, the code doesn't suggest, the.
Just, there's not a lot of place to put it, so it looks like if they got it, it'd go to the roundabout, which is about three hundred fifty feet south of that entrance, which is, you know, that's what, it's basically gonna put the traffic at the same place, is the reason I have.
Sure, yeah, so the code requirement stems from, it's a threshold, so once you hit a hundred units, uh, it becomes a type C development, which requires two entrances. So it's based upon the number of units.
Just following up on the theme, one option for them is to provide a development plan that somehow provides two entrances, is it also an option, if they move forward, if this moved forward, that they could ask for a waiver to that requirement from us?
Uh, no, there's no waivers for these subrets.
Did the, Mr. Chairman, uh, did the county engineer the entrance where it's currently located, it looks like it, there's a challenging sightlines, especially looking to the north. Was that evaluated, the, you know, the, being able to safely pull in and out of this loca, there's a hump, and it's not gonna be easy to drop it down, because there's a big power transmission line, it looks like, I was just curious if an analysis was done to look at the safety of that entrance?
Sure.
In your, your point.
I'd like to defer to, uh, planning commission's traffic engineer, if you don't mind.
All right, Brad Johnson with HMB, um, and I did, uh, serve, um, did complete the traffic study for this, uh, development. We have not specifically, uh, in the traffic study, measured that, that site distance as part of the, the traffic analysis that we've done so far.
Did, did you do, do this for the county or for the developer?
I did it for the developer.
Okay, so not, it is, I was gonna ask if there's a conflict, but he was not doing this on our behalf, he was doing it on the developer's behalf. I, I have great respect for him, just, just clarifying.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify, that is, that is not addressed in the traffic study.
Uh, is that something development plan related that would be available, Mr. Judah? Typically, to see that the one entrance is safe for, I, I think two hundred sixty vehicles a day is what I counted, coming in and out of there.
So, yeah, I think that the, I. So yeah, I think that the, I don't review that personally, it's more of like the traffic engineering side of things, but that is something that we do look at and consider comprehensively.
Mr. Chairman, another question.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
Was it based on 24 units per acre, or was it based on what the conceptual plan was, the traffic study?
The traffic study was based on the concept plan that was provided to us, and it also just, I know this is gonna be a question, had just the single entrance, so it is based on the singular entrance in the concept plan.
Of course, this isn't a development plan, this is a zone change, so it seems to me the traffic study doesn't make much sense if it doesn't do the, what the, possibly put, you know, we're asking for a zone change, 24 units per acres, a whole lot more than what the, what the concept is. We're going for something, it could go more. So all, all we did was just the minimum, what, what they asked for, this time, correct?
We've done it based on the, the concept plan provided, I mean, that, that is typical to do, and it certainly can be requested to be updated either by the state or a planning commission if things change significantly.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions by the staff? If not, I want to ask, does the applicant have any questions?
No.
No, okay. Does the public have any questions or the staff? This is not testimony, this is just a question now, Mr. Julian, it's, you gotta ask, it's a question, it's not a, it's not a...
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay.
Here's a copy for you. I have a few questions. On the last page of the staff report, there's a map of the rectangle, the proposed property, and a legend next to it. The top list on the legend doesn't mention anything having to do with agricultural land, and I can't read the first box. What, what's the name of that box?
So this is just a amendment or attachment provided by the applicant, it wasn't part of my report. They pulled this off of the BG Edg website, so you could visit their website and look at, it's actually based, it's actually, you can access it from our website, it's our online zoning map.
Okay, oh, let's see, number two, on page 13 of 14 in the staff report, goal seven, policy four, reads, quote, "Preserve rural character where appropriate," end quote. Who gets to decide what's appropriate here?
Are you on page 13?
I'm on page 13, goal seven, policy four.
A four, okay. Preserve rural character where appropriate?
And who gets to decide what's appropriate?
That is a good question, I think it's kind of up to all of us, but I didn't cite that as one of the ones that, that this was in agreement with. I cited policy number nine.
Okay, and I have a question about the technical review team letters. The entire west side of the rectangle, the proposed property, is farmland with water draining off the rectangle into the farmland. Why is the farmland and the drainage situation not mentioned in any of the eight technical review team letters?
I should have a comment in there from Jonathan Otis, but however, I, I do not see that in there.
Yeah, well, one of my questions was this, you know, this land that's proposed for zone changes in the county, and Jonathan Otis is the county engineer, and, yeah, why is there not a letter? Is he on the technical review team?
He is, I think that it was my error to not include that. He did not, I believe he did not take any strong position on this particular case. He generally voices his opinions and concerns at the development plan phase.
On the development plan phase, okay, um, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Question on the traffic study. On the first page it says there's 2588 trips. Is that what I think it means? 2,588 actual trips during the day?
Brad, would you my answer now? I'm not traffic engineer.
Yes, those are, so there's daily trips, that is the daily trips, and then...
It means I go out and go to Kroger one time, I go out and go to Kroger one time be a trip.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And when you come back is the second trip?
Yes, and when you come back, it's the second trip.
Are there any other questions from the public? Yes, yes, sir.
I had a question about the...
Sir, I, I, excuse me, I didn't ask anybody, you have to give your name, I did, we do that earlier, so.
For the record.
Just state your name, that's all it is.
I'm sorry?
It's not because, would you say, state your name, please?
State your name for the record.
I didn't ask the first two people, it's not because, we've changed the rules, it's just, I didn't ask the first two people, but please, please.
My name is Bruce Sire.
I know your name, but anybody else, well, most of them probably do.
I had a couple of questions, I had a, I had a question about the appropriateness of the transition, land use transition in the east to west orientation, but I think, I think you all addressed that. I guess the, the question is for your traffic analyst, Brad. The recommendation was, or the, the notion was that the 384 unit development would likely require a second entrance. Was there any sensitivity analysis as to what size of development that the one entrance would serve?
So, in, in the subdivision regulations, there is a requirement that once you hit 100 units, it becomes a type C development, which then triggers the requirement for a second entrance. So it's based upon the number of units that they're proposing.
Okay, so the second entrance at 100, the level of 100, is a full entrance or an emergency entrance?
Full entrance.
Full, okay, all right.
Yep.
Just, just a, a comment, 384 units, two vehicles a unit, that's 760...
Sir, this is for questions only, sorry.
There will be opportunity for you to have that's money.
I, I, we'll be a chance to get that one here, but... Are there any other questions on the public, of staff? If there are not, would the applicant please present their case?
Do you want my client and Brad to swear in?
Yes.
I do want my, yes, I do want to call him up. Do you want him to sign?
Do you swear and affirm that the test money you're about to get tonight is the true voucher, the nothing but the true self-protection?
Yes, it is. I have, Chairman.
We concur with all findings of fact and agree with the staff report as presented. As you all know, I'm Brian Hicks, McNamara Jones, here on behalf of the applicant, 827 Cardwell Lane, or Cardwell LLC. I think we have a unique opportunity here in Frankfurt, Franklin County now, and as you can see, we've had a very contested meeting here tonight about opportunities that we have versus staying where we used to be. I think as we move forward in this opportunity to progress, we need to consider the abilities to provide for affordable housing to those that don't have it. We have a 90%, 97% occupancy rate in apartment housing in Franklin County. This is a proposed $40 million project that would offer 382 apartments to afford, as affordable housing. We currently have a 6,347 renter occupied units in Frankfurt and Franklin County with a 3.1% vacancy, leading to a 97% occupancy rate, which means we are oversaturated. There's a 6% increase in fair market rent over the last year in Frankfurt alone. Our average rent of a two-bedroom apartment in Frankfurt is $880, which is 59% greater than median average across the state. The median household income for renters in Franklin County in Frankfurt is $37,415. 5,725 of the 6,347 units of the recognized apartments in Franklin County are older than 30 years old. We need newer product to allow for our prices to come down, provide more supply, and allow affordable housing to those that don't have it. The west side hasn't had a new apartment complex of any substantial size in the last 40 years. I'd like to just put in the record, unless you all each want a copy, some studies from which I just quoted all those statistics. And in addition, in April, or, I'm sorry, February of this year, in an article on LEX News, it was quoted by Tiffany Martha Oller, the executive director with the Commonwealth Alliance for Housing Solutions, that Kentucky substantially lacks affordable housing options for our working families. Kentucky was 75,000 affordable housing units short before the pandemic, and the number has grown since. The economy needs to provide affordable and available housing options for their workforce, and if they don't do that, those families are going to eventually move and leave, and that's really going to impact our economy. "The amount of resources that are available to create and sustain this type of housing has not grown at the same pace as needed of the community," said Andrew Hall, president and CEO of Housing Partnership, Inc. "We're going to start moving backwards. There are hardworking families that are paying too much towards their basic housing needs. I think the affordable housing crisis right now is critical, and I think it's worsening, and I think it's worse than it has been," Martha Oller said. "We have to get ahead of it, it's only going to get worse if we don't." To Mr. Lee's question, my client is willing to limit the number of constructed units to 15 per acre, as his concept plan indicates. We will also agree to create a greater transition, or a buffer between Ms. Julian's farm on the western boundary with trees and a berm. There is no mixed-use development in this community that has succeeded, this community doesn't seem to support it. I do believe this is a proper transition, Mr. Looney, as you indicated, from what is currently resident, uh, single-family residential to the business district. I understand what you're saying about east to west, but it is a transition from that, that north to south position. And at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant, also a former member of our, or who grew up here in Franklin County, Jason Taylor, to come forward and present some further information.
Guys, y'all had fun tonight. So I just wanted to introduce myself, my name's Jason Taylor, I grew up here, my family's from here, we've been here, been in Vincent Valley, we've grown Frankfortonians. I graduated Elkhorn Elementary, Elkhorn Middle, Franklin County High School, got a degree from Transylvania, a master's in public administration, so I understand all the debacle y'all are dealing with tonight. I have the opportunity to come back and do something that I didn't before I went to college, and that's to add to Frankfurt. We think that there's opportunity in Frankfurt, a lot of people think Frankfurt's asleep. So, we're a national developer out of Lexington, we own a billion-dollar portfolio, we do this all over the country. I don't own that, I just work for the company that does. This is a project that I have passion for, I think that we can do something very good for the community. We do not want to overbuild, we do not want to remove all the trees around the barriers, we do not want to remove the trees in the middle, we're not gonna just grade it out and go to 600 units, we don't think it's appropriate. We will get a second entrance, we have talked to landowners nearby to acquire that, but we need to get approval to start our planning process, and that's why we're here tonight. So we do welcome any questions, we do welcome reasonable conditions or restrictions, we do look forward to making this the right project for Frankfurt, we do not want to make it a problem for Frankfurt. Okay, any questions for me?
Questions for the entire, is there anyone else on the stage? I know you have another.
No, I, I, just Mr. Johnson might have some questions to be answered.
Are you ready for questions now, the staff?
Yes, sir.
Staff have any questions to Mr. Hicks here in the staff? Yes, Mr. Lee.
Just, I've got a traffic, make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that the current average, the current daily traffic on Cardwell Lane is 2,532. That's what it states on page three.
On three, okay.
And this development's gonna more than double, double that, by adding 2,588. Am I understanding that correctly?
They're gonna go, they can go both directions, but that's...
Where are they gonna go, the other way? You said they're gonna go to the south?
Yeah, they can go north or south, so that's, I mean, potentially half and half, I mean, you know, we made those assumptions.
Yeah, I'm struggling to see almost zero impact in the LOS when you're doubling traffic volumes. It's just, it's hard for me to wrap my head around, where are they, where are they?
Well, I mean, the, the existing volume is relatively low, so, I mean, that's, you're starting at As and Bs, and you're going to, you know, As, Bs, and Cs.
Does the traffic analysis take into account the roadway geometry?
Not, not significantly, no.
Yeah, because...
It can be an input, depending on what type of analysis you're, you're doing, but it generally doesn't move the needle much in terms of results.
This analysis didn't, didn't do that, so your traffic is, and this analysis is modeled going towards Davenport and to the north, probably, is where it's, you do a model?
We, the analysis, if you look on page 14, I mean, that kind of shows that breakdown, we got 45% going to the north, 55% going to the south, so close to a 50-50 split there out of the, out of the entrance.
How far did this look beyond the roundabout going through Seemichael-Davenport? Did it look into the other intersections?
That is the, that is the southern boundary of the study, and then the northern boundary is 60.
Yeah, so you, nothing beyond the roundabout and through Seemichael, Western Hills, the pot, where they're gonna go that way, no, nothing beyond there was looked at?
I mean, in the roundabout, you, I mean, obviously, we were making assumptions which leg you're, you're taking, so we're distributing them in all four directions, but not beyond that.
You said 55% was going that way, so 1,200 roughly is gonna go towards Western Hills, the hospital, that, that intersection, and that has not been analyzed with this.
Right, so that, that was, yeah, 50% of the trips are, are heading that direction.
I, I just, yeah, I was making sure the, I understood the limits, the boundaries here, because it's gonna have an impact on the entire system where the traffic's going.
To your point, that, that direction feeds into a four-way stop or a three-way stop, right, there's a stop at the...
There's a couple stops on Seemichael, and then up on the high school, and then you get a signal light up there.
And you get a signal up there, so, yeah, there's... Yeah, generally, we are looking to, to go, I mean, you know, required to go, based, you know, based on KYTC standards, go in each direction, which we've done in this case, really have taken it, like, only go up to 60, taking it a little bit farther in that, that case, but, so, yeah, that's the limits of it.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. I guess I'd like to ask the applicant, Mr. Taylor. Could you just, for our benefit, describe your vision, I know we're at a change, but we have a vision of what these apartments are going to be, could you describe types of apartments? Like, how many bedrooms, what kind of level?
We're showing two bedrooms, which is, is standard, right? Just your, it's gonna be a garden style, walk-up, three-story, professionally-built architecture all the way through, we have amenities. The property has some contours to it, some walking trail around the outside, would probably be an opportunity, we're showing a pool and pool house. To give you an example of a development we just did would be on Harrodsburg, Herschburn Lane, excuse me, and Shilohville Road in Louisville, it's called Rialto, R-I-A-L-T-O. So we build a class product, we're not gonna throw up something that's just vinyl and fall over, that's, that's not what we're doing, okay? We're spending real money. The project is very isolated, if you've ever been to the property, you're driving down a hill, coming up a hill, and then you're cresting and coming back over, so it's contained, there's a lot of barrier foliage that we're not gonna touch. So it could just be a private oasis, for lack of a better term.
How many mobile home units did y'all remove from?
So there were 15 dilapidated houses on the mobile home units on the property, and they were 1978, they were falling apart, property was not maintained, it was not economically feasible to be maintained, we did... We did purchase the property, we did relocate the, the units. We did provide them a very big incentive package to help them improve their situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the retention, do you all have enough for, for water in terms of potential flooding? Do you think that, the retention ponds you've got are enough?
Our final development plan will call it all those engineering things. We haven't done that yet, but no, I do not think we're gonna have any flood. We'll be able to retain everything we need to retain. Again, we're not building six hundred units. We're not going max capacity here. We, we do not want to seek variances for anything. We want to make sure it works. If we need to lower the units, so, so we get into it, back to your question, and we need to up the retention, and we need to drop to three fifty, well, that will be the final development plan.
And as to buffers versus transitions, I would point out that along our western boundary, the entirety of Ms. Julian's farm is developed, except for us, along its eastern boundary, so it's not as though the only ones developed.
Predominantly RB, single-family residential.
And then that...
There's a PO that's not developed, is it, what's, I don't know what's south of that.
And there are apartments to the south.
Townhomes.
Town, townhome apartments.
Development.
Anyone else on the staff?
Yeah, I had a general question, and I do appreciate, we need housing, there's no question about that, need to develop smartly so that it, it takes in everything into account. From a buffer standpoint, single-family, predominantly residential, or other structures that I don't think are above two stories adjacent, does that, if we limited it to two stories, would that impact this? To try to not, again, you're, now you're talking about up, and it seems to start fitting less the character, so it's just a question.
It's a ground cover situation at that point, to get to, we, there's an economic trigger point where we need to get a unit count to make sense of everything, and so if we go to two stories, I've gotta cover more ground, and then I'm gonna be, it's gonna change what we can do on both sides of it, so we would, we would like to stay at three.
So they're gonna be three?
Yes, they're, the proposal right now is a three-story garden.
And, and it's, it's our belief that with the current buffer in place, the, the sightlines of this development will be severely limited, even at three stories.
Yeah, you would have trouble, look, it's, it comes up, and then it goes way down it.
Yeah, it's hard to see on Google, or this, for sure, you can't see.
You can't see the contours yet, no.
Visualizations.
Yeah.
Maybe we should ask for that in the future, in the, the development plans.
What, what, what's our percentage use of the property?
It's on there. I think we're allowed to cover thirty percent, and I think we're covering...
Nineteen?
Nineteen, okay. Sorry, guys, I should have... Yeah, we're allowed to cover thirty percent of the lot. We're covering thirteen point nine.
Under the...
Yeah, under the proposal, we're covering thirteen point nine percent, and we're allowed to cover thirty.
Yeah, I think this will be the only stretch left. What is, what's the fallback with no second entrance? You move forward with the...
If you all approve tonight, we will seek the second entrance. We, we've almost, yeah, we've worked out.
We've already been in discussions with the joint landowners, and it's just a matter of meeting this condition in order to then seek to fulfill that obligation.
We would not come to a final development plan without that.
Can we ask, is it gonna go to the north, the south, the east, the west? Is it going into the residential?
We have, we have opportunities in three different directions.
Well, just a minute. So if I understand correctly, then to Mr. Lee's point, they could put more, they're proposing this, right? Am I understanding that correctly, that they could put more units on the available land space?
The zoning would allow for a higher density than what they're proposing.
But we've agreed to limit to the fifteen.
So you'd be okay with that limitation?
Yes, absolutely.
What you're showing, okay.
Are there any other questions of the applicant, from the staff, from the commission party? We do, at this point, we do, we do generally ask the audience, if they have, publicly, if they have questions of the staff. This is not testimony, these are simply questions. We can take the testimony later. These are just questions you wanna ask, ask the applicant. Does anybody in the, in the public have any questions of, of the applicant? Yes, sir. Would you please come up and state your name?
My name is Jeff Bibb. I live at one oh nine Kensington Lane in Augusta, which is right next to it. I guess my question, you said there's three other possibilities for entrance. What are those?
There are vacant lots through Augusta, the Willacrest, and then to the west, or south, to, through, next to Lantern. We're in discussions with potential owners there.
In Augusta? Vacant lot in Augusta coming through the entrance of Augusta.
I know, I'm just telling you, that's a potential...
Not a very good potential.
I know, I disagree with you. We've got a preference. It's not that.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay. If there are none, at this point in time, we can, testimony, we need to have you to, we gotta take this, or we're gonna, we gotta be sworn for one thing. We need to have you come up and, and give your name, and then we'll...
If you're, if you're gonna testify, you do need to stand and be sworn.
Yeah.
Could we, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Otis is here. Do you think it would be good to get him up and just kind of highlight his report?
He did have a comment, he failed to include.
Can we bring him up to let, so we can get it on the record, kind of what his evaluation was? I don't, I mean, just so we get it on the record.
Is this the time to come up and sign in?
Yes, it is. Uh, yes, make your request, please, yes, there he is.
So he's already signed in for this?
I just, yeah, just wanted that Mr. Otis, you...
Jonathan, you do have to be sworn.
Say again?
You're gonna have to be sworn.
Can we turn my heat off?
Yeah.
Yes, all my heat's on.
So if you've signed in, I need to swear you in to testify, so if you stand, so, and raise your arm hand, you'll be sworn.
People can't hear.
Stand and swear you in if you want, sign up and testify.
Yeah.
Your right hand.
Stand and be sworn.
Yeah.
Do you swear in affirm that the testimony you're gonna give tonight, this public hearing, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be God's.
I know.
Just wanted to give you, since we need to get your report up, if you had any comments or to weigh in on the drainage situation.
I haven't said anything yet.
Who can't be heard?
I was just asking Mr. Otis to weigh in for the record, since his report didn't make it into our report, if he had any concerns or recommendations on the, the report as presented.
So I apologize if it didn't make it in, maybe, maybe that was my bad, but, but zone change requests are, this sort of request, in the early stages, it's hard for me to chime in fully. End of the day, whatever's submitted to me will have to meet the regulations as I see them, and I take them to account downstream, different, different concerns, and so I will be as mindful as I always try to be about that component. If they're not challenging the density that they might do, that's a help for me, and, and so, yes, I'm not, so, yes, my limit of concern is generally the drainage, and I will be mindful to make sure that they meet the regulations.
But the, do you know where, is most of the drainage on this site going west, or where is it headed?
I would, yes, I would say west to south, yes.
Are there sinkholes on the property?
Oh, my gosh, that's not a fair question. I mean, it is, I'm sorry to say it that way, but, I mean, we have certain components that we were mindful of sinkholes, and so we'll look through the normal process of we, how we recognize those, are we done?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
My name is Al Wink. I live at five thirteen old Station Road, and I'm old, and I'll give you just a little bit of history about Augusta subdivision. It started off as a residential development. The developer was going to access this trailer park, and he was going to build residential homes identical to Augusta subdivision. And if the plans were that, I'm not sure any of us would be here this evening, because we always bought property based on the fact that we knew we were gonna build a house of a certain size, certain quality, certain value, and it was gonna be built in back of us identical to that. That's the history of the development when it started. That was the original plans for the developer. I have some real serious concerns about Cardwell Lane. I came in tonight based on one thing. Your plan from the developer calls for one entrance, and that's where I'm coming from. Anything else, I can't do anything about that. Mr. Looney, you spoke to the distance from coming out of the roundabout to maybe where the entrance might be. It's about a hundred and fifty yards. And when people come out of that roundabout from C. Michael Lane and take that first right, when they start up that hill, I think they're coming out of turn-forward Indy, because they're gunning it, and they're within a hundred and fifty yards of where this proposed entrance is gonna be to this new development. This new development back there was, what, three hundred and eighty-four apartments? Got in the truck this morning, drove through Cardwell Lane, drove down Cardwell Lane, went into Melglin, went into Garden Point, went into the Heritage, came back, drove through Augusta, drove through the Highlands. I'm not sure I'm accurate, I'm close. There were three hundred and seventy homes. This proposed complex is larger than that. And when you count the houses that are on Cardwell Lane, there might have been another ten or twelve. But basically, this proposed development, think about it, we all drive Cardwell Lane, we know the size of those subdivisions, and imagine a new development that's larger than all of those put together. Cardwell Lane is not a safe road. It's hilly, it's curvy, we have people that don't drive the speed limit, it's very, very dangerous. When you talk about line of sight, in our situation, as we come out of Augusta, if we want to make a right turn towards the roundabout, we've gotta look back over our shoulder, and we have a very poor line of sight. Fortunately, we've not had any serious accidents, but with the increased traffic that might be present on Cardwell Lane, we're gonna have some problems. We're gonna have a lot of problems. And, you know, the, the traffic in the mornings and the traffic in the afternoons, I spoke with the Transportation Director for Franklin County Schools, Brad McKinney. He was not aware of this proposed development, and I explained to him what they were doing. I explained to him at this time, they were gonna use the Rock Road, and he just looked at me and said, "What?" And he said he couldn't believe, you know, that that development would go back there. He's gonna have buses that stop on Cardwell Lane, and I hope that residents of Cardwell Lane, or, you know, of Franklin County, understand that when buses stop on Frank, on, on Cardwell, they gotta stop in both directions. And if that driver is looking down that road, going back to the development, and sees a kid three hundred yards down the road, that bus driver's not gonna take off. He or she's gonna sit there and wait for that kid to get on the bus. That could be five minutes. So think about the traffic coming down Cardwell Lane heading south, think about the people coming out of the roundabout, heading north towards US sixty, all of a sudden, gridlock. And the reason the roundabout was put in there was to increase traffic flow, and now all of a sudden, that traffic flow's gonna get stopped, it's gonna get backed up down C. Michael, it's gonna get backed up on the other side of Cardwell Lane, because of bus transportation, and we always want safety for our kids as they get on the bus. So we've got two major concerns that we see, and that's the existing traffic flow that's on Cardwell, plus what effect it may have on buses and transporting kids. Now, we met as a, as a POA, I'm the current President of Augusta POA, we met this past Monday night with representatives from Willacrest, a land bearer that owns property out there, and we talked, and we talked, and we talked, and we came up with several points that we thought were extremely important that need to be present, presented. The Cardwell Lane situation, how dangerous it is, what the possible impact would be on bus transportation, getting kids on buses, off of buses, the impact it's gonna have on the roundabout. So those are my two concerns. We have other individuals that are gonna speak to, to other matters, but basically, as one comes out of the roundabout, before they get to the proposed entrance, you've got about a hundred and fifty yards, and that's my poor golfer I. I may be off, I may have missed it by ten yards, it may be a little shorter, but it's not long. It's not long enough for a car to pull out and turn left on Cardwell and not get rear-ended by somebody coming out of the roundabout. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wink. Okay. Next.
Herb Goff.
Hi, Herb Goff. I live on Bamboo Drive in Willacrest. We have a house that occupies three lots. We own the remainder of the lots that are undeveloped in Bamboo Drive, and I can assure you they're not for sale, so you won't have any questions through there. I have several comments tonight, it's gonna take a few moments, but I also have a printed copy for each of you. I'll provide afterward. The staff report notes that properties on two sides of the subject property are zoned rural residential B, with the other two being a senior care facility and agriculture. The current RB designation indicates that subject property is suitable only for single-family residential suburban density district. The comprehensive plan identifies a goal and policy to accommodate multifamily housing within designated growth areas. These growth areas are not defined or determined in the plan. I have the comprehensive plan implement, implementation program identifies a goal one, policy seven, to develop such a growth plan, but to my knowledge, and Mr. Judas, that has never been done, so there is no plan for, for additional growth areas. Further, comprehensive plan, goal one, growth by design, policy two, indicates approved new development only when the public facilities and the public services needed to serve the development will be available. All parties are aware that the sewer capacity will not be available until at least 2025, and even at that date, it's contingent on other development occurring. In fact, the letter from the Frankfurt Sewer Department Representative Michael Hess relates that FSD has Project Prevention Park, which will remove a significant amount of flow into this portion of the existing systems. This should allow for the proposed development after completion of this project. Note the "should" in response language. Apparently, no calculations were made, simply an educated guess as to the system having sufficient capacity. This should be a warning, not only to the planning department, but also to developers, that the expected capacity might not come to fruition. Secondly, the same goal one, growth by design, policy seven, indicates develop an urban growth plan with designated growth areas that can accommodate new, moderate-to... growth plan with designated growth areas that can accommodate new moderate to high-density housing units. Again, this has not been done. The property is noted on the future growth map contained in the staff report as suburban residential. The comprehensive plan notes under land use guidelines of suburban residential as the primary land uses in suburban residential neighborhoods should be single-family detached homes. Clearly, the drafters of the plan did not envision placing numerous multifamily dwellings in a suburban residential setting. There's no reason for this to take place at this time. Further, there is a caution in the land use guidelines under multifamily housing indicating limited mixed uses may be appropriate where they pose a minimal impact on surrounding land uses regarding traffic, noise, lighting, and other similar elements that create conflict among land uses. In the present scenario, the developers are proposing 384 units adjacent to single-family dwellings on two sides, farmland and a nursing home on the other side. At this time, it's not been disclosed the number of expected tenants. But assuming four per unit, that's two bedrooms, two kids, two adults, this would place 536 new citizens in an area joined by two single-family developments. In addition, the traffic study indicates 2,588 trips per day from these new citizens, further stressing a sea-level intersection where Cardwell Lane intersects US 60. Also, the already-stressed Michael Davport Boulevard, which becomes clogged with school traffic twice a day, will see additional vehicle load. All this is coupled with a vague assurance that an adequate sewer system will be available. Placing this number of new vehicles on the road in this confined space does an injustice to the citizens living in the area. This flies in the face of the guidelines, limited mixed uses may be appropriate where they would propose a minimal impact on surrounding land uses. The staff report justifies this higher-level housing development as a transition between low-density housing and commercial development. The commercial development is the business of the C. Michael Davport National Park. However, these are simply a collection of one-story businesses having low-traffic distances. They consist of doctor's offices, investment companies, YMCA, and other businesses. None are retail businesses or high-density commercial construction. In this case, there's no reason for a transition of the proposed development itself to pose more of a disruption than in Davport Park. Additionally, no consideration has been given to the existing construction adjacent to what is proposed to be the largest multifamily development in the area. In this proposed... This is proposed to place single-family dwellings alongside 16 12-unit apartment buildings without the transition of any intervening developments. The Franklin County zoning ordinance defines the purpose of Rural Residential B District as the intent of this district is to establish and preserve a quiet, single-family home, neighborhoods free from uses except for those which are convenient to compatible with the residence of such a neighborhood. Based on this definition, placing the proposed 384 apartment development adjacent to to established RB developments would be a disruption to the quiet, single-family home neighborhoods that the drafters of the zoning document never envisioned. There's been no information regarding the type of multifamily dwellings proposed. Even if the developer has a focus, this could change based on economics and later need. The policy limits range from high-end condominiums to low-end subsidized housing. In most cases, this low-end development is served to drive down property values of those adjacent. In addition, with middle-income dense housing, then you get crime, litter, noise, and other inconveniences. The staff report lists before any map amendment is granted, the planning commission must find that the map amendment is in agreement with comprehensive plan or, in absence of such a finding, that one or more of the following apply: that existing zone classification given to the property is inappropriate, and that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area which were not anticipated. Clearly, the proposed map amendment is not compliant with comprehensive plan, and for reasons already given, the existing classification is appropriate to the developments on both sides. There's simply no evidence of alterations or changes which necessitate such a change. Therefore, no map amendment should be granted. There's no compelling reason that a change in the zoning should be made since the proposed zone does not conform with existing use, current the comprehensive plan, the land use adjacent to the property, and the desires of the citizens in this area which we hear from tonight. The present comprehensive plan was originally crafted in 2001 with text updated subsequently. However, the plan notes that tables and charts listed in the body of this comprehensive plan contain data obtained during the original adoption of the document in 2001, as were noted. As a result, most of the data being relied upon is over 20 years old and simply cannot be relied upon at this time. An updated comprehensive plan is being developed, which we heard about earlier this evening, which should contain updated projections, guidelines, and direction. Due to the changes we all know have occurred in the world in the last 20 years, it strongly suggested that the commission table this action until it can be reviewed under the new plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Going forward, and this is... I want to be up there. Mr. Goff, you have one presentation, but can we... We leave about five minutes. That's okay. That wasn't placed on you. You gave a wonderful summary there. It's pretty detailed. But coming forward, we have several things on the agenda, not that it's not even important, but can we keep it around five minutes? We have that.
Do you have questions?
Oh, no.
I didn't realize I went on five minutes. Thank you very much.
No, it wasn't. We just adopted that, Mr. Goff.
Jane Julian. Five minutes. Is there anybody who's signed in who would like to give me a few minutes? Just a few minutes? Give me a few other minutes? No? Okay.
We'll go ahead and take you, John.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And let's see. I want one for everybody. And also one for Mr. Jackson. Okay. One for Mr. Jackson. Yeah, thanks, Robert. Okay. Any other? Okay, let me get started. Um, phew. Cardwell Lane, Cardwell Lane. I'll just say, I'll start out by saying 45 years ago, my friends and I rode horses up and down Cardwell Lane. I guess those days are gone. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and assembled citizens. I'm Jane Julian, and I live at 1915 Louisville Road. We've heard a lot of numbers tonight. Now, I want to talk about philosophy. I'm here to talk about the ecology and the natural resources of the land involved in the proposed development herein called the rectangle. A portion of the fence line, about 900 feet long for my farm, forms the west side of the rectangle. The front page of the staff report states that this west side is zoned, quote, agricultural, end quote. This is about the only time in the 41-page staff report that the agricultural zoning designation gets any mention. In fact, on page seven of 14, the staff finding promotes the proposed zone change saying that, quote, "The surrounding land uses are a mix of residential, office, and commercial uses," end quote. This glaring omission of the agricultural zoning is a major mistake, and it leads people to believe that the 900 feet of my farm fence and the land beyond it doesn't matter, and people can just forget about it. This is a mistake... This mistake is an insult to everyone who breathes air, drinks water, and eats food because the mistake implies, oh, this land is just vacant. It really doesn't count in this discussion. The applicant needs to heed goal one, policy six, that states, quote, "Provide overlays within the city and county that identify aspects of the landscape that are of cultural, ecological, and historical significance. For example, mature woodlands, old railroad tracks, stone walls, historic buildings, wetlands, steep slopes, et cetera," end quote. These overlays will show how the rectangle will affect not only farmland, but all the categories that are included in agricultural and rural residential zones. In keeping with the spirit of omitting references to agriculture and rural activities, section two of the traffic report that HMV engineers submitted to the Transportation Cabinet, number This number states that, quote, "Cardwell Lane is a two-lane urban collector," end quote. And the staff report works on this premise that the neighborhood around Cardwell Lane needs to be, quote, "urbanized," end quote. I had hoped that the staff report would talk a bit about how new development would affect my land and how the rectangle would need to accommodate itself to being a good neighbor to my land and to the natural resources therein. Instead, we get nothing but talk about making the rectangle and the neighborhoods around it more, quote, "urbanized," end quote. In its haste to, quote, "urbanize," end quote, Cardwell Lane, the applicant in the staff report denigrates all the farmland in the county and all the natural resources in the land. Now, let's talk about water. On my page 15 of the staff report, in the staff report pages that come after 14, there are no page numbers, so I added numbers for my convenience. So this is my page 15. There's a concept plan for the rectangle. This plan says that the rectangle will need to have two retention basins on it, which looks like mosquito heaven to me. I don't know about the small basin near Cardwell Lane, but the larger basin in the lower left-hand corner of the plan will back up to my fence line. On the plan, this basin looks like it's almost as big as four of the apartment buildings. So this would be quite a large piece of construction. Now, if you look at the map from the Property Evaluation Administrator, that's page nine of my... 29 of my paging, the plan shows several areas of trees and brush that wind their way around the rectangle. This dark, curvy area is how water presently drains off the rectangle. As you can see, this water drains to the southwest and runs under my fence line in several places. And this drainage then runs south through my farm and feeds into my creek, which is Armstrong's branch of South Benson Creek. This drainage also feeds into an old spring on my farm. As this drainage runs under the boundary fence and through my farm, it widens and deepens and become a hollow that is quite prominent when you watch it. Now, we can figure out that, in addition to rainwater, a lot of what will run downhill off the parking lots of these 16 apartment buildings will contain lots and lots of man-made materials: trash, oil, gas, and any other kind of pollution. My big fear is that this runoff will run right down through the hollow, under my fence, through my farm, and downstream to South Benson Creek, from there into Big Benson, and on into the Kentucky River, and downstream from there. I'm concerned that my land, the South Benson Creek, and all the ecological creatures and plants along the creek banks will be irrevocably damaged by runoff from this retention basin. Also, this area of my farm is protected by the state and federal Purchase of Agricultural Conservation Easements Program, known as PACE. And the entire farm is on the National Register of Historic Places. In addition to this, my farm is a working farm that is very busy providing oxygen so we can have air to breathe, a continual stream of water that brings forth all life and food for everyone to eat. Since the rectangle is in the county, I'm surprised that the letters from the technical review team don't include comments from anyone at the State Department for Natural Resources or comments from the county engineer. And one more thing before I sum up. If I can find it, if I can't find it, we'll skip it. Well, oh, we might have to skip it. Anyway, in the minutes from the October Planning and Zoning Meeting of this year, Mr. Swager asked City Planner Eric Cockley a question about housing in Frankfurt and Franklin County. And Mr. Cockley said, you know, we're working to provide a suitable number of housing for everybody. It's an unmet need, and we're working on it. And Mr. Cockley also said, the housing study that we're doing will tell us how to meet those unmet needs. So now, here we have evidence on page, I think it's... No, it's on page something of last month's minutes, that there's a housing study going on in Franklin County. Hey, why don't we wait until the housing study is finished and entered into the record before we contemplate adding lots and lots of really dense housing? Now, I've told you all I know, and I'm going to wrap up. I've presented facts and opinions that I ask you all to consider. The omission of agriculture from the staff finding on goal one invalidates the staff report. I ask, therefore, that you all direct the applicant to withdraw this application and to not submit it again until we've finished the rewrite of our comprehensive plan, including the housing study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julian.
Mm-hmm. Are you all taking... Are you all asking questions?
No.
No?
We'll take your time.
Okay. Nobody in the audience can ask a question? No? Hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Doug Booth. My name is... Excuse me. It's Doug Booth. I live in the Augusta Sub area. And at one... I retired from Frankfurt, and I had a very high position with the number-two employer in Frankfurt at that time. And quite frankly, if somebody had brought that plan in to me for my decision and approval, I'd send it back. Not enough due diligence. That plan needs a lot of work. And I'll give you some examples here. If... We're talking about one entrance way in a gravel road right now to be used solely. And if you measure off everything and follow state and county laws, there's not enough room. Why? State law, county law says, with that many cars, you have to have two lanes with a minimum of 15 foot per lane. That's 30 feet. State law, and instead, that's Law 178 pass dot 04. State law also says that you need six foot for shoulders, three on each side. And that state law is HD 702. Then you need 10 foot for the landscape screen, per county law. If you're changing it to an HD, you need a 10-foot landscape screen. Then you need 20 foot to... It could take 10 to be separate from property lines. You can't build a structure supposedly within 10 foot of a property line. Now, here's the big one. Because you have not been afforded the water study... Because you have not been afforded the water study, there's a detention pond thirty feet from this proposed road. And if you put a crowned road on, you change the whole water structure. The whole water structure just changes like crazy. And we did, I had a hydrologist take a quick, quick look. Needs more diligence. And he estimated that if you follow the county law, which says that the water will increase, that you need a retention pond that's over two-hundred-and-twenty feet from that structure, structure being a road. It has to be two-hundred-and-twenty feet more. So there's no room to put a road there, an entranceway. None. And then, the property that's available to that lane is fifty, sixty. And we're talking, you know, over two-hundred feet. Even if you eliminate the water problem, you're still talking seventy feet. It's crazy. More diligence is due. And also, you've talked an awful lot, we've, it's been awful, talked on an awful lot about the traffic impact. More diligence, I think you're well aware, is due there, too. I'd like to make a comment about, you know, the gentleman who said he's looking out for Frankfurt. I don't think he is. And the board, if you read your board motto, is to promote and protect the public health, safety, morale, conveniency, and general welfare of Franklin County. If you put twenty-eight hundred people here, or not twenty, seven hundred people here without due diligence, that's no good. You have to do due diligence, and it hasn't been done. And if you want me to get an engineer to do due diligence, I'd be more than happy to do it for you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Donna Harret, and my husband Scotty and I reside at Five Thirty-Seven Old Station Road, which is in Augusta subdivision. Before I get to my prepared remarks...
Ma'am, could you like, I, could you not read four or five pages? We're just, it's getting so late. We're glad to take your prepared remarks as testimony, but it's just getting to where we, if it takes fifteen, twenty minutes, I don't...
It's not going to take fifteen or twenty minutes.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But before I get to those prepared remarks, there's something that came up that someone asked about the lay of the land, that they could not see it on the overhead projection on the staff report. The land that adjoins to Augusta, that is for the proposed development, Augusta comes in this way, and then the property for the development goes up this way. So if you put in three-story building above that, it's going to dwarf what is in the subdivision adjoining it. It was mentioned that maybe you could reduce that to two-level units. Just a thought, that that's the lay of the land. I'm sure that the developer would give you permission to come out there and walk the property if that would help. But I'm not here to speak to you all as a wildlife or green space activist, but as a resident and property owner in Augusta subdivision, which adjoins the proposed zone change property. There are fourteen properties in Augusta that adjoin this proposed development. There are ninety-five lots in Augusta, and fourteen of them adjoin this property. I'd like to call your attention to several comments in the staff report pertaining to this zone change. On Pages Six, Seven, Eight, and Twelve in this staff report, it notes that the development guidelines, as well as in the policy sections, call for the need of increased landscaping, buffering, and setbacks, the protection of the natural environment, minimization of water runoff, and providing green space within the proposed neighborhoods and those linking neighborhoods, as well as the preservation of the natural topography and natural features such as the trees, woodlands, wildlife, rare species, streams, and ponds. Also stated in Goal Six on Page Twelve, the staff findings cite future land use designating the developer to create a buffer transition between the single-family homes to the north and northeast of this development. The previous property had approximately twenty dwellings with around forty vehicles. And there were times when the noise level from these dwellings and the vehicles were quite loud and disturbing. Now, this development change would create three-hundred-plus dwellings and possibly five-hundred-plus vehicles. Makes me think of a Walmart parking lot minus the tractor trailers that park there overnight. There currently is a tree buffer line that separates these two properties that includes a small stream. Right now, as you would expect, that stream is quite dry due to lack of rain. It is our hope that the green space in the buffer zones will be increased again, as cited in the staff report, due to the volume of this project. The wildlife that we have seen in this buffer and stream area include, but are not limited to squirrels, groundhogs, raccoons, foxes, and rabbits. And we also have our nightly owl that visits. On Halloween, we actually had a deer decide to come by and do some trick-or-treating at the houses along the adjoining property. I guess he's kind of looking for candy corn. We, the property owners of Augusta, would like for this board and the planning zoning staff to consider the impact of the volume of the increased activity would create for adjoining neighbors and the wildlife that currently inhabit the existing small amount of green space and stream and the buffer. Since the talking points I mentioned are in the staff report, we are in hopes that you will continue to monitor the green space during, and the buffer zones during the construction and development of this property and ensure that those issues are incorporated in the further development of this property. Thank you for your opportunity to speak on this zone change, and I'd like to allow Al Wink the remainder of my five minutes.
I don't know how much is left. Come on up, Al.
I'm less than a minute.
Who did I say?
Al Wink, I live at Five Thirteen Old Station Road. A retired schoolteacher, twenty-seven years in the Franklin County Public School System. Every time me or the math department wanted to do something, we would approach our principal with ideas about, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do. And they would always come back to us with direction. Do this. Do this. Come back and see me. And that's all I'm asking the commission to do tonight with the proposal as it is. My principal would say, no, come back and see me later. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you all this evening? My name is Chris Shimler. I'm president of Envision Franklin County. Our mission is to promote thriving communities and development that results in healthy relationships among people, the land, and future generations. We fully appreciate the need for more housing in this community. We totally agree that, especially affordable housing, that we need more units out there. However, we're concerned about putting a high-density, this proposal that would rezone land for high-density, you know, apartment complexes in the county at the edge, once again, at the edge of our served infrastr, our areas that are served with infrastructure. We think that our community, as we all know, has so many vacant lots and frankly embarrassing, embarrassing empty shopping centers and other places that could benefit so much from mixed-use centers that include high-density residential apartment buildings, townhouses, mixed with retail, to create thriving centers in our areas that are already served by infrastructure. It is misplaced to continue to push development out to the margins where we're already strained with our infrastructure, with our sewers, with our roads, with drainage, with the safety and the well-being of the residents in the community who decided to live and invest and have their families and their futures vested there in that area because, because of how it was zoned, because they had the assurance that there were going to be single-family homes around them. And we continually pull the rug out from under folks in Franklin County by doing things like this, when we have abundant places in our town to create the kind of housing that we do need, okay? We're really concerned about the fact that this land, while, yes, that border is primarily already developed with residential, but, but the impacts to that, to the Julian Farm, are already tremendous. And I don't know if I can overstate the significance of the Julian Farm to this community. Jane and her family, I'm sorry, I feel really emotional about this. I've worked for hundreds of years to protect that farm and make it an asset for our community. It is so important, and I think that farm deserves special consideration and care. That rectangle that's not developed doesn't necessarily need to be developed because that area has that drainage that ends up in that creek that serves her cows and her farming operation, and is that wooded area and that swale, yes, you might not be able to see it from Cardwell Lane, but it provides important ecological functions for the, for the future of that farm. And we cannot just assume because all the other lots along that line are developed that that one needs to be developed. Because I have been before this body and dealing with development issues many years, just like many of you have, and I can't tell you how many times we have heard, whoa, we'll take care of the water. We've got that figured out. We're going to do this basin and that. And yet, the number-one issue that our magistrates and elected officials have when they get concerns from constituents is water, is drainage problems and flooding problems. Because we have developed in a way that has not been conscientious, we have taken things for granted that, oh, yes, we can take care of it, but none of us are playing God here. We've made lots of mistakes in our community. People deal with flooding and drainage and sewage problems all the time. Let's not continue to exacerbate that with this development. We think strongly that this is ill-advised. It doesn't meet the comp plan. I won't go over some of the points that have already been made, but I agree with them. You know, the comp plan says that development should be connected, that those new residents should have opportunities to get out and get to centers without getting in their vehicles and creating more traffic problems. And yet, this is a totally isolated, you know, Envision's a totally isolated place where people are going to be restricted coming in and out to get to all their services via car. So it doesn't meet the comp plan for the connectivity issue as well. And the transition, I mean, to me, that feels almost like a joke. I mean, the transition needs to be to ag. That ag land is so prominent there, we're at the edge of the county, and it's not transitioning to a more urban area. It needs to be that, any development that happens there needs to stay with the current future land use designation, which is appropriately designated for single-family residential use, and the transition should be something that aligns with that character because it's already an appropriate use. There's nothing that's been presented today that meets any of the requirements for changing the zone change, that it's no longer an appropriate zoning, or that there are extraordinary circumstances that warrant the change. So it doesn't meet either comp plan requirements or the zone change requirements. There's no green space envisioned in it. That's what kind of quality of life are we providing? Infrastructure's not available. The dangers from the traffic in the road have already been talked about, but, you know, I just want to remind you that you've got schools and a hospital there. And so creating traffic snarls when people are trying to get for, to school and to the hospital is an extremely bad idea. And I talked about this, just treating people in this community with respect. I think it's really important, and I recommend that you do not act on making this zone change. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mahesh, and I live in One Zero One Old Station Road in the Augusta subdivision. And I didn't plan to testify today, just wanted to listen to the conversation, but I had an experience when I was driving here this evening with the traffic. So that is, already, most of the folks have talked about it, but I just want to share my experience about the traffic. I had two close calls, not one, two close calls today because of the Cadwell Lane from US Sixty to the roundabout. It's, already has too many humps. My three-year-old calls it as a wobbly ride whenever she gets onto the car. So it has too many humps, and there is so many blind spots there. And as it's, now it stands, itself is a dangerous or very cautious drive. When adding up almost a double-up traffic to the Cadwell Lane, I see a very dangerous environment with too much traffic going on. And the second point I would like to bring in is about the entrance to this proposed community. There is a curve, there's a slight curve when you drive down to the roundabout, and it has zero visibility. Why I say this is, last year, there used to be a trailer park there, and there used to be a high school kid living in the trailer park. He used to wait for a school bus with, wearing a red sweatshirt. But I, I didn't see him, I usually used to see him, but only after I pass him or when I get close to that. There was, I don't even see him from at least a hundred feet because it's curvy and it's zero visible. So having three-hundred-plus cars added to the entrance, I say it's going to be a very dangerous spot as well. I just wanted to add that to the, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Brian Fitzgerald, four-seventeen Old Station Road. I know it's been a long night for everybody, so I had some prepared remarks. I'm going to skip those and just try to hit a couple of points. I think the commission very insightfully was talking about the border and the barrier between the different zoning areas, and I just wanted to point out that really that whole area north of St. Michael-Davenport is already bordered by single-family residential. So to make this change where you have three-hundred-and-eighty apartment units, three stories tall, as it's already been mentioned, is going to be an extreme difference in the, in change in the area. So I think we have to really think about, is this really a buffer? It seems more appropriate there. The second piece, I think we all have to use a little bit of common sense and realize the second exit's going to go to the south. It's going to put out that traffic right back to the same place where it was going to go already, which is that traffic circle in Cardwell Lane. I've lived there five years. That is extremely, extremely difficult and unsafe to drive now. You double that traffic, someone will get hurt. It's just the way it is. I'm a father of four with three girls that are going to start driving in the next five years, so, you know, I'm concerned. And I hope that each of you think about, your families may drive Cardwell Lane, too. I hope you think about that and consider that as you vote, and I urge you to deny the zoning change. Thank you.
I don't have my name signed. Can I sign off? It's just...
Did you sign up, sir?
No, not yet. Can I sign it? We'll not take...
Come on up. Just need to give your name and square.
Just tell them who you are.
My name, my name is Krishna Garla. I live at One Oh Eight Kensington Lane. I will not take more than thirty seconds to make this statement. I'm just going to state the fact that the kids in Augusta subdivision cross Cardwell Lane through Heritage subdivision to go to school, including my son, who goes to Western Hills High School. And I conquer everything what Al said about the traffic and just now what Mahesh said about the traffic. I believe one-hundred percent because I drive on Cardwell Lane. I've been living in Augusta subdivision for past six years. My first one used to walk. Now... I'm one hundred percent agree, like on you, we need new development in Frankfurt, and everything we knew, we do need in Frankfurt needs to be new, I agree. But this may not be the right place, or time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we gotta take, can we take one more un-
I should be on the list. Am I on the list? It will not take two minutes. My name is Stacy Dennis.
Yeah, I thought it was scratched. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, well.
There we go, you're up.
Thank you, I won't take, but just a minute of your time, my name is Stacy Dennis, I do not even live in Franklin County, but I have worked in Franklin County for over thirty-six years, and I'm here for a different population tonight. Um, I know we've spoke of kids, uh, for this area, but I'm here to represent Franklin Farrell, who is the owner of, uh, the assisted living Morning Point and the Alzheimer's, uh, dementia unit, the Lantern, which is right beside he, beside there, uh, and that we, uh, house approximately eighty-four residents, and some of those residents still drive and, and do banking and things. Um, and we just want to make a quick statement tonight, we have immediate concerns regarding the safety, noise, and the disruptions for our eighty-four residents, uh, with this, uh, coming to play. So we, we are asking that you really consider this and search your heart and soul about this tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Please, just one more. Okay. Unless you're, unless you're on the list.
Just tell me your name.
I will, you wanna swear me in?
Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give us? I do.
Susan Smith, and I'm a resident of the Heritage across the road. Our entrance to our subdivision is directly across from the gravel road. Um, in two thousand twelve, when we built our house in the Heritage, we were shut down the day we had the bulldozer there, uh, to break ground for our house, and Planning and Zoning told us we were three percent over the limit of twenty percent, uh, usage of the footprint of our house. And we had architectural plans already approved by Planning and Zoning and everything, but we were shut down for that, and we respected it. We went back to the architect, we spent another thousand dollars, we reduced the size of our home footprint, and we continued to build. And we have an investment there that means a lot to us. But my, my testimony is geared toward you all. If you have so many unanswered questions of great importance to so many people, would it not behoove you to at least delay approval until you get guarantees in writing that your conditions will be met? And it's my understanding the traffic study's incomplete, the water study's incomplete, uh, the natural resources review is incomplete, and I urge you to delay approving anything until you get those conditions met in writing, and the second entrance is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like, opportunity to rebut some of the comments.
I do wanna say.
I don't, I don't think, I think we've already hit the law.
I've got two minutes, and I've just got one, one thought.
Mr. Logan, are you saying he doesn't need to speak?
Do not speak.
If, if, I just wanna point out, we, we are actually green people.
If we built houses on this lot, and if I developed it, I could do a hundred and twenty-one lots, okay? I can cover thirty percent of a nine-thousand square feet, I can cover three hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet of the whole twenty-five acres. My proposal is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So if I built lots, I would cover more ground, have less earth, and more problems. Nothing that we're trying to do is trying to affect anybody else. Our runoffs from our parking lots would go into sanitary sewer. The green space that you're seeing, the retention ponds, that's for the green area. We're not gonna make a trash chute, we're gonna build a Class A project.
And, and ninety percent of the concerns that were addressed, as you all know, and as some of the more seasoned opponents of, of development have, have figured out, are addressed at the development state, plan stage, which now you routinely require us to come back before you for. Completed traffic studies, completed water runoff studies, capacity studies, all of that comes back to, before you at the development plan stage. The entrance that exists now will not be as it exists today when we do this. Obviously, we're not gonna use a gravel road to access an apartment complex. It's gonna be widened to the state standard. A bus can drive up into it, they aren't gonna park on the side of the road of Cardwell Lane to drive into a hu- three hundred and eighty-two apartment complex to pick up children. The average density of a two-bedroom apartment is two-point-one-six persons per apartment, not the four that was testified to or, or estimated. There have been four zone changes before you, all have passed, along the Jane Julian Farm, all of which she opposed. It's not apartment complexes she opposes, it's all development. Developers are in a catch-twenty-two. If they choose a site, they can be labeled as if, as infill development, and they're criticized because they're going against something else, or they're adding to the traffic if they seek to go on the outskirts of town, and they're accused of urban sprawl. This is infill development, this was a sixteen-unit mobile home park. I can't imagine that the citizens of Augusta really enjoyed that as well. When we came before you to develop Augusta, everybody in Willacres came out to oppose it, yet we passed it. They say we should have mixed use, then the next person says that we ought to have separation between housing uses. We can't win for losing. We're trying to do everything we can and do it right. Planning and zoning staff has recommended approval, they have agreed that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan, contrary to what Ms. Schimler said. It is in agreement with the comprehensive plan and the future land use. This is a perfect opportunity to provide affordable housing to people who need it in an area that is ripe for it. That's all.
Okay. So we have number-
There's no more testimony.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're closing up here.
Second.
That we, uh, have the staff approve a summary based on testimony, we will, uh, schedule a decision on this, the next, uh, will being in January.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Excuse me. Okay. Do you discuss a motion? No discussion of motion? Uh, no, Secretary.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Winnie?
Paul. Paul.
Mr. Winnie?
Yes.
Mr. Lesher?
Yes.
Mr. May? Mr. Say Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman of the House.
Mr. Secretary, if you please.
Public hearing, Pike Green Farm LLC is requesting a zone amendment from rural residential District RR to agricultural District AG of a one hundred and thirty-one-point-six-nine-acre property located at forty-three twenty-five Shadrack Berry Road. The property is more specifically identified as PBA map number zero-seven-one-dash-zero-zero dash zero-zero-dash-zero-two-four-point-zero-zero. This is a county item, and I need this word. Do you swear in a form of the testimony you're about to give us? Do you have a signature?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Judah, you set your name to the record.
Ben Judah.
And what's your position as county clerk?
Planning supervisor.
And your capacity, planning supervisor, have you reviewed the application of Pike Green Farm LLC for a zone amendment?
I have.
Have you refused your, your review for writing?
Yes.
And have you made a recommendation for the record?
I have.
What is your recommendation?
Staff recommends approval of the request.
Do you have any additions or additions to your staff report as prepared and submitted?
No, sir.
Could you briefly give a synopsis of this application and your review?
Sure. So the request, uh, before you right now is, uh, to rezone from rural residential to ag. Uh, the applicant would like to establish a campground, uh, they characterize it as a glamping site, um, which is kind of like a trendy, you know, a little more upscale campsite than your, um, you know, roughing-it type of campsite. Uh, they're proposing three to five sites, um, and, uh, the, under the, the regulations, uh, campgrounds are classified as a conditional use, um, so also on the agenda tonight is a conditional use request for the same campground. Um, I do have all positive findings, and, um, I am recommending approval. I'd like to enter my report and testimony to the record.
Does the commission have any questions?
I'm curious why it's not a conditional use in RR.
Um, but a lot of, a multitude of recreational activities are conditional in the ag zone. Um, rural residential is generally more just residential, it does allow for some agricultural uses in the RR zone, um, but those recreational activities, campgrounds and the like, um, tend to fall under the ag zone as conditional.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question, yes, concerning the restrooms and showers facilities and the other, who monitors all of that?
So any restroom, uh, if any permanent restroom facility would require Health Department approval. Uh, the applicant's aware of that, and the Health Department is working with them. At this time, though, they're not proposing any permanent structures, they're gonna use a porta-potty type of setup, and then eventually maybe down the road, construct something more permanent.
So their long-range plan is to go beyond these three to five units then?
Um, at, at this time, they're only asking for three to five. Um, if the conditional use were to be granted, which this is the zone change portion, um, if there's, conditional use were to be granted, uh, you can limit the number of campsites as a condition, and if they want to go beyond that, they'd have to go back before the Board of zoning adjustments to have their conditional use amended to whatever they would be requesting at that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I mean, this is a hundred and thirty-one acre property, um, five glamping spots doesn't take up very much room. Um, this is kind of a, a general question, would, would it be something that would be entertained, that's where you only rezone a portion of the property?
That is not the request before us, so I just analyzed it for what, what was asked. I think that they also have a vision of maintaining, uh, the, the current agricultural production on-site, so it's kind of fits in line with their vision for what they're trying to do.
Are there any other questions? Other commissioners standing?
Okay. If there are none, I wanna ask the public if they have any questions.
Just take your name.
There'd be a question, my testimony is the question about what?
Uh, my name's Dan Pepper, I'm a resident of Shadr- well, own property on Shadrack Berry Road, and I would ask the Planning Commission, um, if it's changed to agricultural zoning, would it, would there be a requirement that they only have the conditional use for the campground, or would, once it's changed agriculture, would it be possible for, um, warehouses to be built on the property? So, the distilled spirits warehouses? Nobody, I don't know if anybody else asked, would ask the question, but.
Well, we have, that was more or less just go earlier, we, we had a motion earlier on, and it's not been-
So that'd be approved by the physical, by the city commission?
This, this relates to this particular property.
As of right now, no?
In, in general. Well, that testimony hasn't gone through yet, but it-
I had the same question, but right now it's not big enough, per what we said, two-hundred acres is the minimum.
Okay.
Per the testimony.
I have, I have, it's small, it's one, one thirty-five, was it?
One thirty, one thirty-six.
Yeah, you're, you're-
Well, I'm in support of, as, as a comment, I'm in support of, um, their request in recreational use, I'm in support of that on the property, obviously.
Thank you.
Anyone else out there have a question? Yes, sir. Take your name, come on up, sir.
Uh, Rick Hardy, I'm on Shadrack Berry Road, I'm at the bottom of the hill, and this is at the top of the hill, and I already have two houses that are dumping their sewer on my property, and I've reported it, and reported it to Health Department, they don't do anything about it. And I don't know who's gonna monitor you after you, this is done. And it's next to West Six, and where do they stand on this? Because they've got a nice recreation thing going there.
Correct, yeah, so West Six was notified of the request as an abutting property owner, and I don't know if they have any representatives here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions from the public to the staff? If not, we'll, uh, ask the applicant if he has any questions. All right, so it's time now for the applicant to present her case to the public.
Thank you.
Hi, would you like me to state my name?
Yes, would you have a chance to review the, uh, the staff report?
Yes.
Let's, let's get a score in first.
Okay.
Oh, sure, is it?
Yeah.
Do you swear in a form of the testimony you're about to give us? I do. Thank you. Tell me your name.
William Martin.
Thank you.
And you have a chance to review the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with the, agree with the, uh, do you agree with the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is this my?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I don't know if I have much more to add than, than what was in the staff report, um, just that, you know, we see the value of, of the property in its scenic, rural, agricultural nature, so, um, it's in our interest to keep it that way. Um, you know, we're not seeing a, we're not envisioning a campground that's everything all clustered together, um, these would be placed in scenic spots so that they feel isolated, and, um, you know, we're, we're trying to take, um, take care of the land, and, um, it was asked about the, um, bathroom facility, we understand, like, um, if we wanted to do anything more, more permanent in the future, we'd be working with the Health Department on that.
Okay, does the staff have any questions of the, uh, of the applicant?
Yeah, we're talking about campsites, not RV sites.
Not RV sites, they would be like semi-permanent structures, like no utilities to them or anything, just, um, either kind of like a canvas tent or something that's like-
I thought you headed the-
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so where are they gonna use the bathroom?
In a porta-potty-type facility, like one we rent and have serviced.
Okay. So you're gonna plant, put one of these at each side?
No, we were gonna have like a centralized spot, is how we're thinking of it now.
On the hundred and thirty-one acres?
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna spread them across the hundred and thirty-one acres, but, um, yeah.
Is this my?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know if I have much more to add than what was in the staff report. Just that, you know, we see the value of the property in its scenic, rural agricultural nature, so it's in our interest to keep it that way. You know, we're not seeing a, we're not envisioning a campground that's everything all clustered together. These would be placed in scenic spots so that they feel isolated, and, you know, we're trying to take, take care of the land, and it was asked about the bathroom facility. We understand, like, if we wanted to do anything more, more permanent in the future, we'd be working with the Health Department on that.
Okay, does the staff have any P5s?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The staff have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, we're talking about campsites, not RV sites.
Not RV sites. They would be like semi-permanent structures, like no utilities to them or anything, just either kind of like a canvas tent or something that's like a...
I thought you headed the...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so where are they going to use the bathroom?
In a porta potty type facility, like one we rent and have serviced.
So, you're going to plant, put one of these at each site?
No, we were going to have like a centralized spot is how we're thinking of it now.
On a hundred and thirty-one acres?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to spread them across the hundred and thirty-one acres, but, yeah. We will be, we will be thinking about how far people need to walk.
There you go.
Yeah.
I mean, are we going to walk across a hundred and thirty-one acres to go use the restroom?
No, but this is, this, it won't be for everybody, but it'll be for people that kind of, you know, want to do some hiking. You know, we'll maintain trails on the farm. Yeah. It was, I know someone commented on West Six. They didn't offer any official recommendation, but I did speak to one of the owners, and they seem generally amenable to it.
Any other questions, the applicant? Mr. Sanderson, that was a clear voice. That wasn't the prelude.
I might have to quit doing that, huh?
It's a signal. We don't have, at this point, I want to ask anybody in the audience if they have any questions for the applicant. I don't think there's anyone that's, okay. Yeah, we can take some testimony. I don't think anybody here is here to offer any, anybody here is offering any actual testimony at this point. That's where at that. Thank you very much, the applicant. There's no, no questions, the applicant.
Do you swear in a form of the testimony you're about to give?
I do, yes. Nat Colton. And I'm just offer to all of you my support of this as somebody that's looking to have a farm partnership with Will, raising livestock on the property. I know that's not formally a part of this application, but just to reaffirm that there is intent to use this for agricultural purposes as well. And as an, as a planting soil scientist and an ecologist, but also an agronomist, I can reassure Mr. Hardy that we'll be conscientious of any environmental concerns and non-point source issues that could result from the property and its uses, so that's all I've got.
Yes, we're at the point now, Mr., do we have adequate testimony? Do you think we can go ahead and...
Is there anyone else to testify?
Okay, is there anyone to testify? I thought, I don't think there is.
In my opinion, I don't think there's been enough testimony to make us prepare a transcript on the way to adopt this on the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion for closed book hearing that we adopt the staff report, the legal summary, written and typed as facts one, two, and three, on page thirteen of the staff report, and recommend it to fiscal approval, but it's on that change. From RR to AG, for a hundred and thirty-one point six nine acres located at forty-three twenty-five Shadrack Berry Road.
Is there discussion on the motion? Is there a discussion? Is there discussion on the motion? If you have a, Matt Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson is not here. Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Who?
Mr. Sanderson.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed, as you may know.
Okay. I'm sure you're pleased with the next item.
And according to...
Let me ask one. If we have conditional use, can we, can we address that?
That would be next.
Is it, is it already, okay, yeah, we've eliminated the new business. We've eliminated number one. And number two is the conditional use for, for, that's next. We can address that right now. Okay, so, that's where you were heading anyway, weren't you?
And according to section one five five point oh eight five, and one one, or one five five point one oh five of the Franklin County Code of Ordinance, the Pipe Green Farm LLC is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the operation of campground at forty-three twenty-five Shadrack Berry Road. The property is more specifically described as property evaluation administrator map ID number zero zero one dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two four point zero zero. This is a county item.
All right, so we just heard the zone change component of this. Now, we're looking at the conditional use component of it. I'm going to try to be brief. We've been here a long time tonight. I do have all positive findings in my report, and I do have within the report seven conditions I would recommend, and I can read through those. The conditional use is only permitted at forty-three twenty-five Shadrack Berry Road. Conditional use is granted only to Pipe Green Farm LLC to allow the use of the property for a campground. The conditional use is not transferable, and any change in ownership will make the approval null and void. Four, the number of campsites shall be limited to five. Number five, any permanent restroom facility must be approved by Franklin County Health Department. Six, any future signage must comply with section one point five five, three point five oh, sign regulations, and receive a permit. And finally, there shall be a designated turnaround for fire apparatus. And with that, I'd like to enter my report to the record and answer any questions.
Good. Is anyone, Mr. Sanders, do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
You had a recommended condition of limiting to five sites. Is that per discussion with the applicant? Because it seems like this is a large piece of property, so...
Yeah, it was based on a discussion, and their initial request was for three to five, so I just went with the higher end of that, and they were, they were agreeable. So, if they do have any future plans for development, they'd have to come back for the Board of Adjustments to request for additional sites. Of course, this body may change that number as well. It's just a recommendation.
When you say sites, is that...
Campsites, individually.
There was pictures of an A-frame and a glamp thing. Is that, that's one, one A-frame is one site, or, okay. Seems like a low number, but you're good with that.
So, so it's not one cluster equal...
Individual sites.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? I'll be, staff. Very good. I would like to ask the public if they have any questions of the staff. Okay, just one time, I'd like to the applicant to present their case. Mr. Judah?
Do I need to swear in?
It lasts a while.
Do you agree with the seven conditions of staff order and the findings of approval?
Yes. I guess maybe I have a question on the signage. I don't really understand how that... If we wanted to have a small sign on the road, does that just mean that we would have to get that approved?
Correct.
Okay, then, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good.
I don't think the commission has, is there any question for the applicant? Well, is anyone in the audience saying anything they want to ask the applicant regarding this?
Yeah, restroom, no issues.
Yeah, are there any issues?
None.
No, okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this question? Yes, sir.
Did you swear to make a statement?
Yes, she did.
You swore first time, or did you act okay?
I'm Dan Pepper. I own property on Shadrack Berry. I just wanted to speak in favor of their request. I think it's a great idea, the West Six Brewery that's there. It would be a benefit to the, to that entity and to the community, and it wouldn't have any negative impact, in my opinion, on anyone in that area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the applicant's request, additional use permit to allow campground property located at forty-three twenty-five Shadrack Berry with these seven conditions on page four, five, the staff report.
Second.
Wait a second. Is there any discussion? Discussion. No discussion. No discussion. Matt Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed, as you may know.
And Matt Secretary, would you please call the next item, which should be the last one?
Yes, Buffalo Trace Properties.
What's the list?
Yeah, always table. Buffalo Trace Properties LLC is requesting approval of a funnel development plan for the construction of bourbon warehouses RR and SS on a property located at fifty-seven oh one US Holly, one twenty-seven North, and ten seventy-eight Lewis Ferry Road. The property is more specifically described as PVA map number zero six zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two five point zero zero. PVA map number zero six zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two five point oh one, and PVA map number zero seven three dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two four point zero zero.
Good evening, commission. My name's Robert Hewitt. I'm the Director of Planning and Building Codes for Franklin County. As indicated on the agenda and by your Recording Secretary, Buffalo Trace is requesting two additional warehouses, labeled as RR and SS. This would constitute phase seven of their development of the site on top of the hill, if you will, top of one twenty-seven, formerly known as the Dobner True Farm, which was rezoned back in 2016. Buffalo Trace then acquired just in the last year or two the Carter Farm, which was an additional fifty-three and a half acres, bringing the total site to roughly three hundred and forty-seven acres. And I know the drawings in your report are small. We're doing our best to do everything electronically in terms of plan review and such, and I didn't want to print out a bunch of big stuff, so... But I did bring some eleven by seventeens with some close detail, and the builder has some drawings as well, if you wanted to see those. The location of warehouse RR is in the northeast corner of the True property, behind an existing barn that comes off, that is accessed from the main entrance, okay, off of one twenty-seven. So, they are just veering off of the new access road to the right, providing a new containment field, including all the appropriate fire protection measures as we have, as they have through the entire development of this site. Every warehouse has a fire monitor assigned to it that's accessed by the fire department. The secondary access road was created off Lewis Ferry Road that meets the standards for emergency management and such, and now we have a second, a third access off Carter Farm for use by emergency vehicles, so... But RR is northeast corner behind the existing barn. It is proposed to be the same size, shape, and characteristic as the other warehouses that are on site today, all right? SS is in the western portion of the property, directly behind warehouse DD. This would be a smaller warehouse, okay? SS has a footprint of ninety-six feet by two hundred and thirty-five feet, which is a footprint of twenty-two thousand six hundred and eight square feet. So, it is fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven feet square footage-wise, footprint, than all the other warehouses on site. Both warehouses, RR and SS, will not disturb any of the tree canopy that's currently there. They're tucking them into areas that have already been farmed in the past. The technical review team reviewed this. Everyone's good with it. The Buffalo Trace and their engineer Horizon, Robin Mills, has, as part of phase seven, gotten used to what we want, and they were very accommodating, and every, all the review agencies are in agreement, more importantly, the fire chief. So, I've recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer the question.
Robert, that's like, I know it's got the Lewis Ferry Road address, but that's not the front side of that Lees Town manly property we approved about two years ago. They had it locked in. That was not going to be accessible to, only emergency only?
That is correct.
Does that actually have a Lees Town, that's not the same piece of property, is it?
No, it's made in Lees Town.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I thought so.
Well, you're talking about Lewis Ferry Road?
Yeah.
You're talking about the Lewis Ferry Road entrance. Yes, that is a secured entrance only.
Okay, okay.
It's not the Manly Lees Town entrance.
Lees Town manly was approved, but the only access it had was going to be an emergency entrance. And I was wondering if that was actually, you had now given it actually a Lewis Ferry address for the business, but it's not the same piece of property.
Well, the Dobner Farm had the Lewis Ferry address. The True Farm had the one twenty-seven north address.
Can I see one of those larger?
Why, sure. So... So, they're wanting to build closer to Manly Lees Town?
Yes.
No, sir. No, sir, it's still, I mean, well, it will be roughly the westernmost. You're correct, but it'll be the smallest warehouse. And, and if you...
He was saying Manly Lees Town, right?
Yes. So, Manly's Lees, Manly Lees Town would be north and west on the page. Lewis Ferry would be parallel to the south. I'm happy to pass this one out if you all would like to see it.
Yeah.
Can you tell us which ones, where they are on this other?
Yes, ma'am. Robert?
Yes, sir.
Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. Can I ask a question, Mr.? I live on Lewis Ferry. Currently, if I'm not mistaken, in our prior discussions, when we approved all this, no tractor and trailers were supposed to be on Manly Lees Town. Correct. Or Lewis Ferry. Correct, yes. The main entrance is on one twenty-seven. They are constantly. So, my... Well, they may be to the, are they not servicing the Wilkinson Boulevard campus because of the wastewater treatment plant construction? No. Okay. The client, or, excuse me, the counsel for Buffalo Trace is here. Perhaps he could address that. I was unaware of any tractor trailer traffic on Lewis Ferry. Yeah, I've had to try to get by tractor and trailers coming down Lewis Ferry, which is totally, totally, totally a nightmare. But also coming down Manly Lees Town. They'll come down Manly Lees Town, turn, and go down Lewis Ferry Road. I was unaware of that. Well, much as I don't want to tell the truth, the problem is this. The GPS is sending them that way. Okay. So, my question is, is can we figure a way to rectify that problem? I'm sure there is a way. I am sure. Because I've actually, I live on a dead end of Lewis Ferry. Yes. We have tractor and trailers getting back there, going to Town and Country Farms Lot. Okay. So, somewhere along the way, the GPS is messing it all up, so my only question is, is... And this is probably out of left ballpark, isn't it, Mr. Logan? Is there a way we can get them to... Is there a way we get Buffalo Trace to try to resolve the GPS problem of sending tractor and trailers down that way? I'm sure they'd be happy to, to resolve that issue and... I'd greatly appreciate it. I'm sure they will, you know, with technology today. Anything can happen. Yeah. And I will be, could we pass the drawings down so everyone else can see them? So, it's showing RR and SS. Now, as long as these aren't on the front of George, or on Ointon Road. RR would be the closest, but it's behind the barn. Yeah.
But will it be seen from Onton Road?
Yes.
So you'd see it over that hill?
Well, you'll see it when you're on top of the hill at one twenty-seven, because you're heading north.
On the road itself, you'll see it from the road.
Yes.
Can we shrink it? You're good with it?
Yes, sir.
Are there any more questions from the staff? I mean, from the commissioners' staff?
Thanks, Robert, you're welcome. Thank you.
Does anyone, does anyone in the audience have a question for the staff? Anyone at all? Okay, the applicant, please present their case.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Charlie Jones here representing the applicant, obviously, we've been over staff report, working staff, and the review agencies over the past several months, and I'm here to answer any questions you have. Let me address the GPS.
Yes, address the GPS issue.
I am very certain those aren't our trucks. So Buffalo Trace is undergoing a massive expansion, we're building our own sewer treatment plant.
Right.
And there's a staging area on Floyd Smith's property right before you get to your property, I believe the trucks are going, they're third-party contractors taking stuff to the staging area for materials to build the sewer, the new sewer treatment plant. They're not taking barrels up that way, because our tractor trailers, I don't think can go up that hill.
They're not going up, they're going down. They're coming through off Onton Road, mainly Lees Town, and going down Lewis Ferry.
Oh, you're saying they're making a loop?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't believe that's a GPS problem, because I believe those are our drivers, so if they, if they're going that way, we can direct them not to go that way.
You need to do that, but GPS is an issue, because I actually stopped one the other day, because I knew he was lost. So I asked him where he was going, and he wasn't even going to Buffalo Trace. He was going to, what's it, Jim Bean, I don't-
He's lost.
Yeah. But his GPS sent him that way. So I don't know how to resolve that issue.
Our drivers, I mean, certainly we'll make sure our drivers are not coming up one twenty-seven into the farm, from the one twenty-seven entrance where they're supposed to go, and when they leave, for whatever reason, going back out down mainly Lees Town and Lewis Ferry that way, I can address that with, with my clients.
I, I don't know why they did that, it, this, they've done it four or five times, though, I've caught them on the road.
But it's the other one, that, you know, once that project's done, that staging area will be, be built.
I have a question for you. Just general point of interest, if I did, if I counted my alphabet letters right, this would make number seventeen and eighteen warehouse on these two sites.
Oh, it was nineteen?
Nineteen?
Eighteen, nineteen.
It was nineteen, I believe.
Okay, then I did it wrong. Okay, so how many, how many more beyond this should we expect to?
We bring in Mr. Ballard, we're done, right?
This is.
We cannot fit anymore on there, based on what I've been told. This would maximize, as you see, SS was kind of, kind of squalls in, so we had to make it smaller than our typical footprint, this is to maximize space, because we're out of space. But, yes, I, it would be extraordinary, I think, for me to come back before you for other warehouses on this land.
Don't you mind?
I'm not gonna box myself.
We understand you.
Does anyone else on the commission have a question of the applicant? If there are none, at this point in time, we're gonna ask people in the audience if you have any questions of the applicant. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regard to your request? There are none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lee.
I'm gonna make the motion that we approve, found bill plan, construction berthelm, first warehouses RR and SS, and the property located at fifty-seven oh one US Highway one twenty-seven north.
I say, sir.
Any questions, discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any no discussion, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Looney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Swager? Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, will you adjourn?
Second.